And welcome to the Board of, Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Public Hearing for Tuesday, October 24th, 2023. With that, we will start with a roll call, please.
Commissioner Barnett.
Here.
Commissioner Baxter. Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sacks.
Here.
Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner Woodward.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we are going to have our invocation and pledge of allegiance going to be led by Commissioner Barnett. If you're able to, please rise.
Dear God, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business for our community. Guide our hearts and minds in the spirit of fairness. Impart your wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. We seek your help with our affairs. Bless this meeting with your divine intelligence and help us to make the best use of our own. We are of diverse opinion here, yet we wish to reach agreement satisfactory to all. Please share your wisdom with us to help us do right by all concerned. Thank you for your heavenly blessing. Amen.
Let the record show that we've been joined by Commissioner Baxter.
Thank you, Mayor.
No problem. Alrighty, so next, we have notice has been properly given?
Yes.
Okay. With that, proof of publication has also been presented. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication? We have a motion by Commissioner Barnett, a second by Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. Great. Next, we are going to have swearing in by our county attorney. So if you wish to speak today, and I'm not sure how you're doing this in all five rooms, but...
Well, so all those wishing to testify or speak on today's items, including those in the overflow rooms, which would be, we have the seventh floor, the atrium, and the 12th floor. Would they please rise and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
All right. Thank you. So next, are there any additions, deletions, or substitutions to the agenda? Oh, there you are.
Yes, so we do have amendments to the agenda, as well as an addendum amendments to the agenda. So the first one, we have 3A1, LGA 2022, Indian Trail Groves, Ag Reserve, Fluke. They're revising a condition number 17A and B.
Revisions, which is for the applicant's proposed condition number 18. On page two, we have revision again to the amendment to the text. B, future land use for the ag reserve tier. The new policy 1.51-11, I-1, has an amendment. On C, future land use, West Hyder overlay. Three, new policy 1.52-B, we have an amendment to the applicant's that's stricken. Item four, there is a policy 1.5.2-C, there is a correction in the policy reference. Item six, item number six, new policy 1.5.2-E, WCR exchange parcel, item number one, we have amendments to the language. Page three, under D, future land use amendment, the Western Communities Residential Overlay, objective 1.11, Western Community Residential. We have a correction to the, reference to the ordinance. Item seven, a reference to a policy, a correction on number eight to a reference to a policy. On 3B1 abandonment DOAW Indian Trail Groves, we have a revision to condition 44, planning condition in exhibit C1, both A and B. And then 11, revision to engineering condition 11. Uh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Page four is revision to paragraph H and J and add paragraph O to engineering condition 37 in exhibit C1. A revision to engineering condition 38 in exhibit C1, specifically B. And we have some correction notations for planning condition 43, prem condition nine. And more specifically, on the applicant's proposed condition, I counted nine lines down. They had added a B where it currently says "B." The later to occur of should actually say the earlier of, and that's on the ninth line of that proposed applicant. Page five, 3B8, ZV PDD 2022 143 Hyder West, AGR PUD. We have an amendment to planning condition three in exhibit C2 relative to a policy reference. Revising engineering condition seven of exhibit C2, A with extra words. Item 10, conditioning, engineering condition H and J revised, and O revised with new language. On page six, revising engineering condition 11 in exhibit C2, more specifically B of that condition 11. We've also have additional correspondence, that's part of the amendments to the agenda. Memo from VHB, letter from Simmons and White, a list of GL Homes District Park deliverables, email from Mayor Keith James, a letter from Lori Vinicor with the Alliance of Delray. On the addendum to the amendments to the agenda, on page one, we have a revision to ABN DOAW Indian Trail Groves. We're revising a school board condition in exhibit C1, specifically condition two. On 3A1, LGA 2022 21 Indian Trail Groves, we are modifying the future land use amendment conditions of approval 19 and 20. And that is the end. What? What? And more correspond, oh, I'm sorry, and additional correspondence. A petition from the Coalition of West Point residents, a letter from Jordan Snyder Esquire on behalf of the Thousand Friends of Florida, and various online comment forums. Now that's the end.
Okay. All right. With that, would somebody like to make a motion to the amended agenda? I guess is the best way to describe it.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion from Vice Mayor. We have a second from Commissioner Moreno. All in favor, all opposed? That motion is, passes seven to zero. Okay. Do we have any postponements? Seeing none? We've adopted the, oh, we've already adopted the agenda. Okay, so I want to take a point of personal privilege and recognize Commissioner Moreno.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we do the business at hand today, I've been asked by the Town of Jupiter to ask for a letter of support from the Board of County Commissioners for a federal grant for the Sawfish Bay Marine Restoration Project located within the Loxahatchee River Lake Worth Creek Aquatic Preserve. You all should have received a copy of this letter yesterday. It's just a letter of support.
May I review it and then, is it long?
We're just giving direction to staff. We're giving direction to staff to send the letter on behalf of the Board.
I'm sure it is a good thing. We probably took care of it at the legislative delegation meeting. And if you say, Commissioner Moreno, it's a good thing, and it's a good thing.
Thank you very much.
So I don't have any objections to this.
So I would just like Board support to send out a letter with the mayor's signature.
Does anyone object to the Board sending out a letter on this? I'm not seeing any, so be it.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Alrighty. Okay. We're getting ready. We will go into, next will be disclosures. We are hearing, there are actually, so we have both a land use and a zoning item in front of us, but we'll, we're going to handle them as one.
Right. So let's just do, everybody do their disclosures.
Right. So we'll do our disclosures at this time, and so we get that on the record. Okay. And we will start to my left, Commissioner Barnett, if you, your disclosure, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've had verbal communications with Ichko Ezarati, Meg Weinberger, Eric Weinberger, Brandon Cabrera, Dagmar Braus, Steve Wallace, Rick Roth, Mary Nicholas, Burgess Hansen, Betty Argu, Jeff Sluggett, Len Lindell Jr., Alan Fant, Cliff Hertz, Kevin Rattery, Sam Sintron, Young Dirks, William Dirks, Michael Wolf, Lisa Interlandi, Karen Marcus, Jeffrey Zerulnik, Jordan Snyder, Robert Hartzell, Paul Owens, Chris McVoy, Mrs. McVoy, Sergio Diaria, George Garrido, Maria Antonia, Mirta Lucesis, Elizabeth Rosado, Cindy Jones, Barb Bowline, Tyler Glock, Gary Barber, Jeff Coons, Tommy Stroud, Willie Guardiola, Alan Gast, Misha Ezarati, Ernie Barnett, David Shiner, Larry Portnoy, Tom Turkin. I have correspondence to receive and file, lots of emails, no site visit. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Woodward.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I had verbal communications with Mary McNicholas, Burgess Hansen, Betty Argu, Joe O'Donnell, Judy Hill, Cliff Hertz, Kevin Rattery, Misha Ezarati, Larry Portnoy, Len Lindell, Steve Wallace, Barbara Roth, Myrna Rosoff, Debbie Murphy, Christopher McVoy, Paul Owens, Rick Roth, Michael Wolf, Rabbi Shapiro, Rabbi Brody, Alan Fant, Karen Marcus, Lisa Interlandi, Milton Block, Kay Gates, Sheila Calderon, Bruce Rochelou, Gail Ladd, Lorna Wallach, Dagmar Braus, Jeff Coons, David Shiner, and Tom Turkin. I have multiple letters and emails filed with the clerk, and I did a site visit on the Hyder West property.
Thank you. Commissioner Moreno.
Thank you, Mayor. And I know everybody's probably adjusting their lists as we go because, you know, this has been a discussion since the day I walked into office. So if I forget anybody, I'll update if that's the case. I have had verbal communications with Mary McNicholas, Betty Argu, Burgess Hansen, Cliff Hertz, Kevin Rattery, Larry Portnoy, Len Lindell, Jeff Coons, Ken Todd, may he rest in peace, Tommy Stroud, Steve Bednar, Brian Seymour, Jeff Sluggett, Alan Fant, and Rick Roth. We've received countless emails and letters from residents. They've all been filed with the clerk. I have seen those properties. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've had verbal communication with Christopher McVoy, Jordan Snyder, Clifford Hertz, Ryan Seymour, Mark Perry, Drew Martin, Jeff Coons, Dick Norwalk, Kevin Rattery, Larry Portnoy, Alan Fant, Dr. Lori Vinicor, Andre Fladel, Karen Marcus, Fred Angelos, Ron Book, Steve Wallace, Beth Rappaport, Myrna Rosoff, Barbara Roth, Debbie Murphy, Heidi Mahaffey, Jeff Zerulnik, Sherri Scarborough, Mayor McNicholas, Jeff Sluggett, Representative Rick Roth, Linda Smith, Bruce Rochelou, Kay Gates, Dave Aronberg, Joe Bruzo, Daniel Hartman, Joy Williams, Bonnie Goldberg, Jiji Tailander, Mayor Keith James, Armando Fana, Fay Johnson, City Commissioner Joe Peruzzi, Daniela Costa, Jennifer Morton, Lauren McClellan, Barry Franco, Mindy Coke, Jim Knight, Marty Perry, Mark Silverman, Joseph O'Donnell, Lorna Wallach, Arlene Houston, Commissioner Thomas Turkin, Mamie Kizner, Sheila Calderon, and Betty Argu. And I've had correspondence and received phone calls and no site visit. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. My office received numerous emails, which have been filed with the clerk. I have spoken with Larry Portnoy, Kevin Rattery, Betty Argu, Burgess Hansen's, Cliff Hertz, Len Lindell, Jeff Coons, Ken Todd, Steve Bednar, Brian Seymour, Keith Wedgeworth, John Carter, Keely Haverlin, Rick Roth, Colin Friedrich, Matt Reinholdts, Elizabeth Akamondo, Keith Giordano, Patty Farrell, Mary McNicholas, Jeff Sluggett, Ron Book, Andre Fladel, and Stephen Wallace. I've had no formal site visit, but I have been on site in a personal capacity.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I've had meetings and verbal communications with Ishka Ezarati, founder of GL Homes, Alan Fant, Vice President of GL Homes, Larry Portnoy, Vice President of GL Homes. I have had meetings with Valerie Nielsen, Executive Director of TPA, Senator Tina Polsky, Drew Bartlett, Executive Director of the South Florida Water Management District, Kelly Smallridge, President of Business Development Board, Dr. Christopher McVoy, environmental scientist, and Robert Hartzell, Esquire, environmental law, Mayor Keith James, West Palm Beach, Rick Roth, State Representative. I've also had meetings with the Florida Department of Transportation, Tuk Lee, W. Anson Sonnet, John Scarlatos, Burgess Hansen, Executive Director of Indian Trails, and the Indian Trails staff. I have meetings and consultations with Cliff Hertz, Dr. Carrie Snyder, Joe O'Donnell, Mark Silverman, Lorna Wallach, Steve Isaacson, Steve Wolf, Brandon Mills, Rick Stopek, Steve Wallace, Barbara Roth, Beth Rappaport, Debbie Murphy, and Lori Vinicor, York Fruen, Arnold Katz, Norma Arnold, John Gatettis, Rose DeSanto, Judy Goldberg, Donna Lerner, Joel Vinegar, Robert Crusaden, Bob Schulbaum, Drew Martin, Arlene Berry, Kay Gates, Heidi McCaffey, Chandel Plotkin, Baruch Plotkin, Pam Levine, Judy Rubin, Marcy Berger, Wendy Lipsick, Sam Kuntlen, Richard Grosso, Danielle Hartman, Sherri Scarborough, Denise Bednar, Bruce Bednar, Phelan Shepherd, Glenn Dillard, Judy Hill, Len Lindell, Linda Smith, Madeline Marconi, Sheila Calderon, Sue Polly, Bruce Rochelay, Kay Gates, Ed Tightman, Patricia Edmondson, Paul Berliner, Herb Goldstein, Dennis Addeutch, Ann Bernstein, Jeffrey Schnep, William Kikorkian, Joseph Lipsky, Fred Paul, Ken Albert, Alan Monick, Alan Kane, John Sussman, Matt and Sue Pinchek, Rabbi Yossi Shapiro, Paul Owens, Tom Valeo, Mary McNicholas, and also Andre Fladel. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And for my disclosure, I've had verbal communications with Kevin Rattery, Cliff Hertz, Larry Portnoy, Len Lindell, Misha Ezarati, Ichko Ezarati, Alan Fant, Brian Seymour, Mary McNicholas, Burgess Hansen, Jay Foy, Betty Argu, Keith James, Scott Kelly, Armando Fana, William Dirks, Young Dirks, Tyler Glock, Christopher McVoy, Jordan Snyder, Paul Owens, Karen Marcus, Rob Robbins, Tom Twyford, Barbara Roth, Steve Wallace, Jeff Coons, Rabbi Shapiro, Sam Sintron, Myrna Rosoff, Lisa Interlandi, Mindy Coke, Bruce Rochelou, and Lorna Wallach. And I've received correspondence, letters, and emails to be filed with the clerk. Okay. With that, I'm going to announce that you have, if you have not turned in your cards, you will have 15 minutes from this point on to get cards turned in. Staff will be available in all the various locations to help and assist with that. So it is now, let's call it 9:50, and so that would take us to 10, five after 10. All right. Couple of things I need, announcements I need to make? Oh, okay. All right. We'll go back to disclosures again. So we'll start this time with Commissioner Baxter, sorry.
I just need to add a few names. Alan Fant, Thomas Turkin, Misha Ezarati, and Joe O'Donnell.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to add Paul Owens and Robert and Hartzell. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And Commissioner Woodward.
Thank you. I'd like to add Steve Bednar, Marty Perry, Lori Vinicor, Linda Smith, Drew Martin, Jennifer Morton, Brian Seymour, Sam Sintron, and Sandy Schwartz.
Okay. All right. And Commissioner Barnett.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I have a few more names to add myself. Linda Smith, Drew Martin, Brian Seymour, Marty Perry. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And please know, you know, if you need to amend your disclosures, you can do so. So, all right. Couple of things, some announcements as we, before we start the public hearing. It's important, we're going to, obviously people are here and they want to speak, and we want to make sure everybody has that opportunity. Once we get the final count on the cards, we'll know, we'll know how much time we can allot for each speaker. We are going to have a presentation by GL Homes and their folks, and then Palm Beach County staff will present. And of course, the Board will be open to ask questions to any and everybody. I want to advise the folks that are in chambers that we are in order to have, or if you disrupt the orderly process of the meeting, you will be given a warning. And the second time that occurs, you'll be removed by our friends from the PBSO. I hope we don't have to do that. I know we're all here to try and get the best result for our community. So I ask for your indulgence on that. Also ask that disruptions be kept to a minimum. That means clapping, or please don't, if somebody is speaking, you have no right to interrupt them. Also know that staff or that the Board at any time can ask questions of a speaker or go back to asking questions from staff. To my Board, if you need a recess for a bio break, please advise, and we will be happy to accommodate. We will also be taking a break for lunch somewhere around noon, and I expect that break to last for an hour to hour and 15 minutes. And I think that is everything I needed to share. Vice Mayor Sacks, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And I absolutely agree with your statement today. I know there's a couple of folks who are standing who are elderly. So if we have any able-bodied folks who would like to give up a seat, or may I suggest that possibly after you speak, if you would like to vacate your seat and sit outside and watch so that other folks could come in and avail themselves of our limited seating today. So thank you, Mayor.
You're very welcome. And just for everybody's edification, there are, we have additional seating in multiple rooms if outside of this, outside of chambers, so staff can direct you to one of those locations. There are seats available in one of those other locations in the building here. Okay. All right. With that, I don't see anything else, so we are going to go ahead and open this public hearing. And Mr. Rattery?
Mayor, I apologize. If I could real quickly before the applicant presentation, I just wanted to add that following the presentation by staff, which will follow the applicant, we'll have the presentation by VHB, that consultant team that performed the third-party assessment.
Okay.
And would request at this time, if the Board could take a motion to receive and file that analysis, since that'll be discussed.
Okay. So is there a motion to receive and file the VHB analysis? We have a motion by the Vice Mayor. We have a second by Commissioner Baxter. All in favor, all opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. There was one other. Oh, I also needed to announce that the Board had asked and granted that we will have, Mr. Christopher McVoy will be given five minutes. He is representing a large group of folks and providing water, his analysis on, I believe, on the water project. So that was done at a previous meeting. That request was made, and so we are going to honor that request. Vice Mayor, you're recognized.
Thank you. I would imagine, Mayor, and I want to thank the young lady in the back of the chamber who gave up her seat for an elderly person. I appreciate that. Faith in the young people today. Mayor, I wonder if I could, with that in mind, if at some point today, when we will be hearing from folks who represent government agencies, and since they are government agencies, I wonder if we could review at the time, if we could give them an additional two minutes? In other words, five minutes since they represent a government agency? We can cross that bridge when we get to it.
I don't, my honest opinion is I don't think we're going to have time for three minutes per speaker.
I know, but I'm not talking about speakers from the public, although we cross that bridge when we get to it. But I'd like to see folks who represent government agencies to be able, for us to give them the courtesy of reviewing whether we could give them five minutes. And we'll, I'm just bringing that up now so we can cross that bridge when we get to it. It's not a bridge too far. Four? As long as we give some deference and respect to members of government agencies, such as the cities or other agencies, I think it would be prudent and respectful for us. Do we need to bring this to a vote, really?
It's not a voting matter, ma'am.
Okay, good. It's just courtesy.
It's my discretion.
I wonder if you're at discretion later on?
We'll see how it goes.
All right? We could cross that bridge.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Baxter.
All right. Are we ready? I think we are ready now. Sorry about that.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Kevin Rattery, Vice President with GL Homes. I have to start by telling you, for the last month, I have had an issue with my throat. So my voice is going to go a little wonky on you today at particular points and times, and I apologize for that in advance. I will do the best I can. So we have a whole project team here today. I'm not going to introduce them. If they are asked a question, that they are brought up to the microphone to answer, they can introduce themselves then as, to save a little time. Little housekeeping, there are nine items on your agenda today. The first item is really the crux of all of the items that are before you today. That is the comprehensive plan text amendments that would effectuate the proposal that we will be presenting, and your staff will be reviewing after my presentation. The other eight items are the companion zoning applications that go with the text of the comprehensive plan. We have been asked, from a housekeeping procedural standpoint, just to go ahead and present all nine applications as part of the initial presentation. Because the primary crux of the item before you is the comprehensive plan amendment, I'm going to spend a little more time doing that particular one, just hitting on the zoning aspects briefly because the zoning staff did an excellent job at the zoning commission, going through the zoning-related things. Just on a housekeeping matter, before I forget, Wendy mentioned earlier that we had changed a condition from the latter of to the earlier of in the zoning. That actually needs a companion change in the comp plan, so I just want to make sure that's part of the record. That's actually faster than what the draft is. It's earlier of, rather the latter. It's condition 18 on LGA 2022 2021. I'm going to start by asking the President of GL Homes to come up and give a short speech, and then I'll get into my presentation. Thank you.
Good morning. Nice to see everybody. My name is Misha Ezarati. I'm President of GL Homes. It's an honor to be speaking before you today. Our company was started in 1976 by my father, and for the last 35-plus years, we've been building in Palm Beach County. Our roots in this county run very deep. We're proud of the dozens of communities we've built and the contributions we made to Palm Beach County along the way. GL Homes has dedicated land for schools, parks, fire stations, libraries, and other vital civic uses. We built recreational facilities inclusive of soccer fields, playgrounds for children, and amphitheaters that are used for evening movies and concerts in the park. We've built significant portions of major roads, including Point Beach Boulevard, Lyons Road, Woolbright Road, Hagan Ranch Road, and Acme Dairy Road. We've constructed affordable housing projects like Davis Landings in Lake Worth and in the pines in Delray Beach. Our company believes in giving back to the communities in which we build, and our philanthropic program involves giving hundreds of thousands of dollars annually. And our employees spend their personal time... hundreds of thousands of dollars annually. And our employees spend their personal time helping worthy organizations, providing services to needy residents. We believe that we've been a good, trustworthy, and reliable partner to Palm Beach County. The unpredictable pandemic growth has affected all of Florida, and it's accelerated the need to start addressing future challenges today. It's become more critical than ever with issues like water quality, workforce housing, parks, and civic needs affecting Palm Beach County like never before. The proposal before you today represents a unique opportunity to start down a path to address these voids. We didn't just invent the major components of our proposal. We listened as the substantial community needs were outlined by stakeholders. We listened and we reacted. We listened when county planners and environmental experts identified our Indian Trails Grove property as a missing link to connect critical flowways needed to move water. These professionals said these connections would be critical in addressing the saltwater intrusion to the Locks River, grassy waters, and provide cleaning water to the, cleaner water, grassy waters, and prevent harmful discharges to Lake Worth Lagoon. Without the land and without improvements being constructed, however, these are just talking points, and they do nothing to actually address the issue. The water project before you today is doing something about getting these critical connections made and constructing a water project. Our experts will explain further in detail. In addressing another community need, we are proposing to build the largest for-sale workforce housing project in unincorporated Palm Beach County history to ensure housing for those who serve our community at local schools, retail establishments, hospitals, police, and so much more, all at no cost to the taxpayers. We listened when community leaders talked about the need to provide land for housing for seniors and developmentally disabled. We listened to community leaders that need land for the expansion of schools and synagogues. We listened to county leaders identify a need for more parks and areas for civic uses in the western areas, a place for families and neighbors to gather. We responded by offering 45 fully-developed acres at Hyder West between the county park and the public civic site, as well as an additional 200 acres at Indian Trails for a family park, all at no cost to the county or taxpayers. These lands would cost the taxpayers tens of millions of dollars to acquire, and they're being offered at no cost. And we've listened to those who continue to claim that the 1999 ag reserve bond, ag bond proceeds purchased the entire ag reserve to be preserved and protected, when in fact only $88 million of the bond, of the $150 million, went towards purchasing 2,355 acres in the ag reserve. All 2,355 acres remain under lease, and none are being touched by our proposal. Promises to the voters from the 1999 bond referendum have not been broken. But the false narrative that voters bought the entirety of the ag reserve resonates, grabs headlines, and ignites passion. Development was always part of the original master plan, and GL Developments in particular have created 6,000 acres of preservation in the ag reserve, once again at no cost to taxpayers. We did this while creating thousands of jobs and increasing the property tax rolls by hundreds of millions of dollars. Today, you're going to hear many impassioned speeches from both sides of this issue, for and against. Public debate on issues of significant public interest is great. It means people are passionate about their feelings, and this proposal has certainly brought out their passion on both sides. We share that passion. Passion without action, however, does little to address the future needs of our community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have questions.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Bernard.
Mr. Israti, thank you very much for being here. Real quick, the Indian Trail Groves development that we're here to talk about, how many units were you allowed to build on that site before 2016?
The property was one per 10, so it's around 5,000 acres, but there was a portion of the property that was AP. So it was around one unit per 10 acres.
Okay, so it's probably, I have it that it was 379 units that you were allowed to build on that site. Prior to 2016, none of us who were here sat here, and we gave you, not us, the right to build 3,897 units. Since 2016, Mr. Israti, have you built any of those units since 2016?
We haven't started the project, no.
Okay. So through legislative grace from this board, from prior board, you're allowed to increase your units from 359 to 3,897 units since 2016, but you haven't done anything since that time. Is that correct?
We've done a lot.
You haven't, have you built anything on that site?
We've been farming that site, and-
Have you built what you said you're going to build on that site?
We have not started that project, no, sir.
So since 2016, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So immediately, when the prior board gave you the right to build an additional 3,538 units, you've decided that you want to hold this development, the right that the commission gave you legislative grace to do over the heads of the folks in the ag reserve?
No, that's not the case.
Okay.
There's a lot of infrastructure that's required to get out to that site. We have a lot of other projects going on, and we have identified the need for infrastructure throughout the entire county, and have come up with a creative solution and proposal to address that. We have a lot of property and a lot of land throughout the state, tens of thousands of acres that we haven't started yet.
Okay. County staff, Mr. Rutter, I'd like to know a little bit about, what is our process in terms of giving someone the right to build on a site, and then they do nothing regarding it for years and years and years?
So the answer to that is in two different levels. From the comprehensive plan perspective, notwithstanding the condition, there's nothing that would end those approvals. On the zoning side, when they seek that, there are time constraints in our code. There are also significant time opportunities for extension via state statute as it relates to emergency declarations. So we have many, many, many of our development orders which have sought those extensions through the years, and can take a development order that might otherwise have expired within two, three years or so, and extend it for multiple years. That's a statutory provision. I couldn't give you an answer on the exact dates of it. It's as much as any applicant seeks to utilize the statutory exemptions.
Thank you. Mr. Israti mentioned that through GL's developments that they've done, that they've preserved 6,000 acres. What's the amount of acres that's been, that was purchased by the bond, and what's the amount of acres that, that developers have created?
So the acreage we have that was preserved by the bond that the county still owns is approximately 2,400 acres. And two seconds, I will find that information as it relates to about 8,000 acres that have been preserved in the ag reserve through development.
Okay. So, Mr. Israti, you said that GL's built 6,000 acres. Now, when you made those preservations, I know you've knocked on, you said like, hey, the bond only created this much, whatever. But when you built those units for creating those 6,000 acres, wasn't that a promise that GL made in regarding preservation of those units? I'm asking, Mr. Israti, I'm not asking you.
Okay, thank you.
We played within the rules for every one of our developments and preserved 60%.
When you came in front of us-
I don't know about a promise, but we, if there was 60-40 compliant in every single community we've ever built, has been 60-40 compliant. And that's how the preservation was created.
So you made the 60-40 requirement that we established by the county, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So those were requirements that we made, and now you want to eliminate those preservations?
No. We are swapping and using preservation outside of the ag reserve, but still remaining 60-40 compliant.
Okay. All right. Vice Mayor Sacks, and then Commissioner Woodward.
Thank you. You might as well stay right up there, Mr. Israti. These questions are for you. What year did GL happen to, what year did GL take title to the acreage in Indian Trails, to all that acreage? We're talking 2016, but what is the actual year that GL took title to those?
I believe it was 2005.
2005, that's correct. In 2000, and sorry, I knew the answer to that. I wanted to hear it from you, Mr. Israti. So as president of GL Homes, then from 2005, not 2016, 2005, your company has had the opportunity and the authority from a board of county commissioners to begin building in that area. Is that correct, sir?
Not from 2005.
So what happened from 2005 to 2016, sir?
We worked on getting our approvals, which we received in 2016.
And you did get your approvals?
Correct.
All right. So there weren't any, as Mr. Rutter so beautifully explained, about statutory exemptions that occurred in other properties, especially here in the ag reserve. Your company did not ask for any statutory exemptions from beginning to build because of those statutory exemptions, as Mr. Rutter explained. Were those issues such as hurricanes or any type of instances where the governor would declare an emergency?
I believe so, yes. Those are typically automatically granted when they're state of emergency.
And which ones did you receive, sir? GL Homes?
Kevin, we have to answer-
Mr. Israti, please.
Go ahead, Kevin.
I don't know every single exemption we received.
Okay, so who can answer the question?
Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, if Mr. Israti wants to defer to his professional staff to answer technical questions, I think that would be appropriate.
I think at this time, sir, if I, I'm sorry.
I'm looking at our attorney.
Yeah, I think that would be, if Mr. Israti doesn't have personal knowledge of the answer, then someone else who does-
Mr. Israti, do you, I'm sorry. I think I'm in court. I'm sorry.
You're not, yeah.
Go right ahead.
Yep.
You're the boss.
No, no. So go ahead, on behalf of Mr. Israti.
So, the first question that's being asked, just so I can refresh the questions, since we got a little-
Sir, the question that I asked, that he needs to refer to counsel, is the question, what statutory exemptions did GL get from, dating from 2005 to the present time, that would allow GL to not develop on the, on that land in North County? And I'm referring specifically, sir, Mr. Israti, if you don't know, specifically to what Mr. Rutter explained, that in times of state emergencies, such as, such as a hurricane, where the governor will, will state, "We have an emergency," that any of those that you were able to claim is GL to seize, to seize development on that land. And sir, if you do not know, you're more than welcome to consult with counsel. Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. The answer is, from 2005 to 2016, the property was not entitled. So therefore, we do not have the ability to file for an extension for something that doesn't exist. The development order was approved in 2016, 17, and 18, associated with the zoning development order on the property. In answer to your question, we filed for every single one that was available, as we do on every single one of our properties. It is not uncommon, as a private landowner, to acquire property and sit on the property until we, as a company, are ready to commence development on the site. That involves what projects we're currently working on, what projects we have in the pipeline, where our staff is allocated, resources, et cetera. So we owned properties in the ag reserve for 10-plus years before we ever went through an entitlement process to entitle them to be able to develop them. This is a matter of a private company acquiring land ahead of its needs. Thank you.
Thank you so much. As an attorney, you gave more of an answer than I asked. The only question-
The good news is, I'm not an attorney.
Take that, no, it's a compliment. So, let's go back. I asked about, and I don't, I don't need any more reference to it, but I asked specifically about the, the land that we're discussing, and since 2016. So I'll take your answer as it is, sir. Thank you. I have no further questions at this time.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We will now move to Commissioner Woodward, and then Commissioner Baxter.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. And sir, you mentioned the, all of the preserved land that you have purchased and you own in the ag reserve. In 2006, a previous board allowed you to purchase land from South Florida Water Management District?
That is correct.
To put into preserve. How many acres of land did that $20 million purchase for you to put into preserve?
Seven 14? 13 14, excuse me. 13, 1,314 acres.
1,314 acres?
Mm-hmm.
You again came back to this board and were allowed to do the same thing with Lake Worth Drainage District for, I believe, 22 million? How much, how much did that buy?
Two 70-some-odd units.
And you also came to this board to be able to use smaller parcels, what some people, even their backyards, have been able to sell their development rights to you, to fulfill the requirement for preserve. How many acres were you able to buy that actually belongs to private residences within smaller lots?
Just to clarify the record, that was not a request by GL Homes. That was a request by other parties with regard to allowing smaller lots to qualify to meet the minimum preservation requirement. That was not our request.
Fair enough. You didn't request it. Did you purchase any of those parcels?
Of course we did.
How many?
I'd have to, I'd have to check. That's a, that's a, that's a real technical question that I'd have to get into. I'm going to let Mr. Portnoy do some math back there and let me know. I apologize for not knowing that off the top of my head.
Well, as, as he's doing the math, I would appreciate knowing how many acres these three you were able to use, and how many units this was granted to you to be able to purchase or to build in the ag reserve.
Okay. There was my, Mr. Portnoy answer. So the answer is, you're referring to the farm residence provision? It was less than 100 acres.
Less than 100 acres?
Mm-hmm.
So, and just to clarify, the Lake Worth Drainage District, the South Florida Water Management District, you were able to buy development rights from areas that it's been argued aren't actually developable?
Just to, again, just to clarify the record, that went before this board, and this board decided that the existing language of the comprehensive plan actually did entitle the Lake Worth Drainage District to those development rights, just as the prior county attorney determined that the South Florida Water Management District property had rights. The Lake Worth Drainage District availed themselves to the right. They put it out for bid. We bid on it. It came to this board, this board, the Board of County Commissioners, let me clarify. It came before the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners made that policy call that, yes, Lake Worth is treated just like South Florida. They have development rights.
So South Florida Water Management set the precedent in 2006 that Lake Worth Drainage District was able to come back and argue the same point?
Well, there was language in the existing comprehensive plan that said, you know, regional water management, property which provides regional water management for, you know, as certified by the Lake Worth Drainage District or South Florida Water Management District. So during the creation of the master plan, the Water Management District was on record that they're not authorizing the county to take away their vested development rights. The Lake Worth Drainage District simply used that same language in the comprehensive plan to make that determination.
So if I could just clarify with Mr. Rutter, when I was, it was being explained to me with the original intent of the ag reserve, it was to have large parcels for development, large parcels for preserve. And that had been happening for a while, until obviously the large parcels became unavailable. And that's when a lot of this, this new stuff happened. It was actually described to me as almost like a checkerboard, where you've got the red and the black and all over, and then you're trying to move the black on- red and the black and all over, and then you're trying to move the black on one side, the red on the other, within the 22,000 acres that is the Ag Reserve.
The original provisions for a 60-40 development in the Ag Reserve were just that. It was a minimum of 250 acres, 150 had to be in preserve, it was in that space. Boards in 2014 and 2015 made changes, which allowed for, the farm residents made changes for non-contiguous preserves to occur as well. The original provision was not just 150 acres in the blob, but to grow those preserves, there was contiguity, there were contiguity requirements to keep growing those blobs out, as you said, Commissioner. So, those changes that were made allowed for the farm residences and also allowed for non-contiguous parcels to be considered. So, you didn't have to provide that being next door to another one to be the case, and it didn't have any minimum acreages, so other nurseries, things of that sort, that were not connected to, not contiguous to, the larger ones could serve as preserves.
So, you guys played by the rules, as you said, the rules that were set forth, and you did the splits, and managed to find some rather creative ways, it could be argued, to get additional preserved land. And now that all of that's taken, you want to take that preserved land and shift it to a completely different part of the county? Just so we understand what the swap means, you're taking it out of the Ag Reserve area?
I was gonna explain that in my presentation, but yes, ma'am, we are, the policy decision that's being asked of the board today is, will the county allow preservation land in the Ag Reserve to be un-preserved, and the 60% preservation requirement be accommodated on the Indian Trail Grove property in exchange for the public benefits that we are proposing as part of the project? That ultimately is your decision today, whether you want to make that policy change. All we can do as an applicant is put forth an application and set forth what we're asking for the board to consider. Ultimately, that's your decision to make that policy change.
If you could give me the hard numbers on those three proposals, how many acres and how many units you got throughout your presentation?
You were asking about the farm residence provision, if I remember correctly, and I-
The farm residence, the South Florida Water Management, and the Lake Worth Drainage District.
1314 was South Florida Water Management District.
And how many homes did that allow you to build?
Well, it would be up to 1,314 units, correct. I don't think we used them all, because we, in some of our developments, we entitle them, and as we go through and market them, maybe the larger lots are selling better and we reduce units as we go. But the acquisition agreed to with South Florida allowed us up to 1,314 units. And I believe Lake Worth Drainage District, it was around 272 or 277, if I were, and... Is that close enough? Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Baxter, you recognize?
Thank you, Mayor. When did GL become, acquire the Hyder West property?
Larry buys all of our land, so I would defer to him, 2007.
Was it GL's intention, when you bought the land, to do this swap in the future?
No.
Did you ever happen to consider, let me back up, so agricultural preserve, what was the intention, in your opinion, for the Ag being preserved?
Are, just to clarify, are you referring to in the agriculture reserve area?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, the comprehensive plan provisions were set up, that for each acre you built on, you were required to preserve an acre and a half. That's the 60-40. The 60% is effectively preservation, it has to be used for row crop, nursery, environmental features, or literally fallow land. Fallow land is a permitted use in a preservation parcel. Passive recreation uses are allowed in a preservation parcel.
But ultimately, I think it, in the name, agricultural preserve, we're trying to preserve agricultural land. What, if you could share with us, what is the unit per acre difference between West Boca and in the Indian Trail Grove?
Land within the agriculture reserve area that's either part of the development or the accompanying preserve is one unit per acre. The land at Indian Trail Grove is .8 units an acre. And if I, if I could, I'd like to at least respond to some of the earlier question with regard to how this property was entitled, because I think it's important for the board to understand what was happening in 2014, 2015, and 2016. The Village of Westlake incorporated. Our property is contiguous, the Indian Trail Grove property is contiguous to the Village of Westlake. The county was concerned that GL Homes would petition an annex into the Village of Westlake and build, you know, thousands and thousands of homes.
And what would have been the process for you to be able to do that?
We would just literally petition the Village of Westlake to incorporate. And they would take a action of their council to incorporate.
Did you have an original unit number in mind when you approached that?
When we appro, we didn't approach Westlake, we just simply were, there was concern being raised.
Let me rephrase, when you started considering those ideas, how did you end up at the 3,870, excuse me, 3,897 units?
Because the density of the acreage is one unit per acre and a quarter, which is .8 units an acre. So, the planning concept that was brought forth at the time was, these are acre and a quarter lots, their density is .8. The county, from a design standpoint with us, wanted to cluster the units so that we could provide more open space on the perimeter of the site, so that we could provide the 640 acres to Indian Trail Grove. So, we effectively have the same density as our neighbors, we're just done in a different form of development.
Of clustering?
Correct.
And just to be clear, I'm not a fan of clustering. But I would like to also, how many parks have you built in the Ag Reserve?
Are you talking about parks for-
Active parks in any form?
Active parks in the Ag Reserve, we have, we've actually built a soccer field for Palm Beach County as part of the Canyon Town Center. We were dedicating 10.8 acres, which is where the new library is going. So, we actually conveyed that 10.8 acres and built a soccer field on that site, which the county utilized for public purposes. Obviously, where the Canyon District Park is being built, that's on 52 acres, that was dedicated by GL to the county.
One second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, if you could just get a little closer to the microphone, I know you're having trouble with your throat. I want to make sure that the board can hear you.
I'm told this solves my problem.
Would you, do you happen to have a dollar amount of what you would say is a public benefits that you've been able to provide to the community over the years of building?
Well, we-
Do we need to ask Larry?
Larry's much better at math than I am. Are you asking in today's market value?
Sure.
Okay, let me, let us stew on that one back there a little bit.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
The infrastructure that's in place in the Ag Reserve, I mean, I've driven the area, and it is a lot nicer than in Locksahatchee, let's just say. Comparing apples to apples, it's no comparison. It's a lot different. Who do you think, who would you say built most of it?
Built most of the infrastructure in the Ag Reserve? I would say it's a combination of Palm Beach County for the northern portion where Cobra's at, you know, we built a good portion of the roads there under the old Traffic Performance Standard concurrency system before the proportionate share law was passed by the state of Florida. So, as Misha mentioned, we built, you know, we built portions of Lyons Road, we built portions of Boynton Beach Boulevard, so we've built quite a few roads out there.
Would you have a rough estimate, a percentage?
Oh, yeah. I'm gonna start asking you to give me some of these questions in advance, because these are some hard math questions. Thank you. Well, we'll think about it.
So, lastly, just going back to one thing I was touching on, would we, both sets of property, are they currently actively being farmed?
A, for, about 435 acres of the Hyder West property is actively being farmed, yes, of the 3,000, of the 4,800 acres, 600 acres, sorry, at Indian Trail Grove, it's basically all in farming.
600?
4,000.
4,000?
4,800 acres of it is under active farming.
And if this swap were to happen, how many acres would remain in farming? And who would own the acres?
We're approaching this the same way that the county approached the bond in the Ag Reserve, which is, the only way to guarantee that a piece of property stays in farming in perpetuity, is that the county owns the property and decides to lease the property. So, the proposal before the board is that it's a dedication of 1,600 acres. Of that 1,600 acres, about 725 would stay in active agriculture, and it's currently leased to Hunley Farms.
And the rest, how many acres are the, is the water feature going to?
The water feature would be the remainder of the 1,600.
And so then, us as the county would take it over, and then GL would no longer to ever in perpetuity be able to build on that property?
If you're referring to the 725, that's correct. The county would own title to it. So, that's when I said earlier that we were approaching it like the bond. A private prop, you know, if the row crop nurseries are, you know, if the row crop farmers don't want to lease the property, we can convert it to other agriculture-related uses, nursery-related uses, those type of things. But if the county owns it, the county makes the decision to keep leasing it out to row crop, just as they've done for the acreage that was purchased with the bond in the Ag Reserve.
I'm good. Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much. And now we recognize Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. The Commissioner from District 6 asked a question in regards to how much that GL spent into public benefits. Since you're spending the time to calculate that, I'd like to also, for you to calculate the amount of profit that you've made in the 12 developments, since you're, since you want to spend the time to calculate on the public benefits, I'd like to know the profit that you've made also.
Commissioner, respectfully, we're a private company, we're not gonna disclose that information.
So, respectfully, you can tell us the amount that's public that you've given, but however, we cannot know the profit that you've made on behalf of, on the company?
I was asked a question, what do we believe to be the value of the, of the public benefits that we have provided in the Ag Reserve?
And I'd like to know the value of the profit that you've made on behalf of the public.
Again, I'm gonna respectfully answer the question, we're a private company, we're not disclosing that.
I'll follow up with another question. So, let's go on the Hyder West property. You said that you purchased it in 2007. Commissioner Baxter had asked, you purchased in 2007. Just to make sure we understand, what were the entitlements that you could build on that specific property when you purchased it in 2007?
The property was not entitled when we purchased it in 2007. It was part of a larger acquisition with the property on the east side of Lyons Road owned by the Hyder family. Excuse me, I said east side of Lyons Road, east side of State Road 7, my apologies. So, they were, however, property that was within the agriculture reserve area, the 60-40 provisions were already adopted in the comprehensive plan. So, while we bought unentitled property, we were reasonably of the opinion that based on the comprehensive plan and zoning regulations in effect, that we would be able to entitle that property as part of a 60-40 PUD.
Was it part of the 60-40, or is it an 80-20? I'm not sure, just-
So, just to, just to clarify, I'm trying to keep the record straight, it's part of a 60-40. The regulations in the comprehensive plan provide that 80-20 development areas are allowed west of State Road 7. All but one of the agriculture reserve PUDs have been done as 60-40s. And so, that provision, we were using the property on the west side of State Road 7 for preservation for developments east of State Road 7.
So, so do you have any current development rights, or, let me make sure I say, state correctly, on this site right now?
They are part, majority of the property is preservation for existing Ag Reserve PUDs.
So, can, what are the existing PUDs? I just want to make sure I understand it, because I know you're gonna go into your presentation. What are the existing PUDs that currently you use the preservation for?
So, Hyder AGR PUD, which is known as Seven Bridges and Boca Bridges, used-
Hold on, so Seven Bridges?
And Boca Bridges, has utilized 23.84 acres of the Hyder West property as preservation. Lyons West AGR PUD, which is Valencia Reserve, utilized 370.01 acres of preservation. Canyon Lakes AGR PUD has used 19.09 acres.
What's, what's, so Canyon, is that Canyon Isles?
Well, they're, from a zoning standpoint, they're known as Fog North, Fog Central, and Fog South. But Fog North is Canyon Lakes, which is 19.09 acres. Fog Central is Canyon Isles, which is 23.42 acres. Canyon Springs, which would be Fog South, is 25.76 acres. And the Whitworth property, which is called Valencia Grand, is 90.44 acres.
Okay, so, for those developments, you use the off-site, I guess you use the preservation on this site, is that correct?
We, a portion of the overall preservation requirement for those developments was, is utilizing the Hyder West property to meet its preservation requirement.
And do you have any preservation, any development rights on this property right now?
We have a portion of the property, I think it's something like 30 acres that's currently not preservation, but the remainder of the property is preservation.
Okay, so, how many acres is this, just?
It's, the Hyder property in totality is around 680 acres.
So, 680 acres, and about 30 you have still developmental rights, and so about 650 is basically encumbered preservation, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Woodward and Vice Mayor Sacks.
Yes, thank you. When you choose the preservation, when you chose in the past for these properties, the Hyder West property, you chose to transfer the development rights to these communities, which means you were agreeing to the preserve requirements in the Ag Reserve. What allow, what allowances do you have to use that land for, according to what you agreed with, making it preserve? What, what can you do with that land right now?
So, it's, the comprehensive plan sets forth the uses that are allowed in a preservation parcel, row crop, nursery, environmental features, you know, wetland, wetland-type issues, fallow land, nothing is a permitted use in a preservation parcel. Equestrian-related uses are allowed. Thank you, Cliff.
So, and that's, that's according to our comp plan?
That's your comp plan, that's correct.
Which is what we're voting on today, the first thing that we're voting on today is the comp plan. And, because you said that the only way for us to keep the land ag is for the county to own it, when that's not exactly true, because if we hold our comp plan, then you agreed to the entitlements for the preserve to do all of those things that are listed right now. We don't have to own the land, you agreed to that in the preserve.
To clarify, what I said was, the only way to guarantee that the property stay in row crop is if the county owns it. We are not required to keep preservation lands in row crop. As I said a little earlier, you know, if the, if we're unable to lease the property to a farm tenant, we may turn around and lease the property to a nursery tenant, or a beekeeper, or somebody to keep, you know, cattle on the property, those uses that are allowed in a preservation parcel. So, that, the point of clarification was, as a private property owner, although we are restricted in terms of the number of uses we can do on the property, we're eligible to do any of those uses.
Any of those uses that are considered agriculture, are questioned?
For, well, yeah, fallow land is not considered agriculture.
Or fallow land.
Yeah, it could be vacant.
You don't have to lease it.
Thank you.
Yes, you, you could leave it fallow and just pay us the property taxes, right? Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Mayor, you're recognized.
Thank you so much. And to sort of go on what Commissioner Woodward was talking about, there are three areas that you're able to, three different types of functions that preserve land under what we're voting on today, and that is agricultural, and that could be row crops, anything you put in the soil and grows, it's agricultural. Second is equestrian, and by goodness, you're right next to one of the largest equestrian centers, but you could have developed that into equestrian there next to Sunshine Meadows. Or the third, of course, is fallow land, which is very valuable to agricultural. So I just wanted to make that clear. But let's go back to one of your previous answers, sir. And that was to, to Commissioner McBernard, and that was that what you essentially did in the last number of years is when you developed PUDs in the ag reserve, we allowed you as an applicant to take and only develop a certain amount, take the other amount, which should have been preserved, and place it on the Hyder West property, which you did. You followed our directions completely. My question to you today is, you mentioned that the land that you removed from the developments that you developed are Seven Bridges, Boca Bridges, Valencia Reserve, Canyon Lakes, Canyon Isles, Canyon Springs, and Valencia Grand. And I took that right from what your statement was. Have you been able to speak to the people who live in these developments as to whether they agreed that their preservation, that should have been preserved land in their PUDs or in their HOAs, would be transferred outside? And now, well, let me, let me take with that first, take it step at a time. Have you consulted with the residents or the residents of these various communities and asked them if it was okay that they give up their preserve and transfer it to a location west of 441?
It's an interesting question, Commissioner, and the answer is that this has been vetted over the years with the county and the county attorney's office and the staff. The preservation lands are separate and distinct from the developable lands. They are only tied together through the issuance of a development order. The development parcels are owned by an HOA after turnover from the developer. They have no ownership, no control, no or no rights attributable to that preserved parcel. Let me take it to the next level of why that is.
It's okay, sir. I don't need an education.
Okay.
And our time is a little bit limited. So let me just ask you, the answer is no.
We're not required to.
That is okay.
Yeah.
The answer is no.
Yeah.
So you did not speak to the folks of Boca and all the, all these various PUDs that are in my district, hey folks, we're going to develop, but the preserve, which you are entitled to, we're going to put over here west of 441. Now, my second question, after I received an answer to the first, which is no, have you gone back to these folks and said, you know what, we took your preserved land, we placed it on 441, west of 441, if you'd like to know, if you'd like to drive by and see that open land that was in, was supposed to be in your HOA, and we're going to take it, we're going to send it back up to North County so that you can drive up and see your preserved land that we used from your HOA, your PUD, to transfer. Rightly so, you did. But I just wonder if you ever informed the people that that's where their preserve is? And I would imagine the answer is?
We have met with HOA representatives of Boca Bridges and Seven Bridges because they are directly across the street from the proposed Hyder development. We have met with Stone Bridge, so the community's.
Sir, that's not one of the areas, I'm sorry.
I, I understand.
Let's keep it, I'm so glad you're not a lawyer.
The old attorney, just keep it on the question, sir. Thank you.
No, no, sir, no. I'm glad you're not a lawyer. Because you're not getting paid by the, by the word, right? Seven Bridges, Boca Bridges, you discussed that with their people already, that their preserve was going up north. Did you also discuss it with Valencia Reserve?
They have, the development parcels do not have rights attributable to the preservation parcels.
Did you discuss it with Canyon Lakes?
No.
Canyon Isles?
No.
Canyon Springs?
We provided them.
Valencia Grand.
We provided them copies of the notice that the petition was going through. I provided it to each of their property managers and said if they had any questions, they were more than welcome to give me a buzz.
All right. Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Mayor, I was just going to simply suggest, this is going to be a long day, can we let them get to their proposal?
We can, but the board, board is, everybody has the option to ask questions.
No, absolutely. I just think it's going to bring even more questions.
I, I don't see any other lights lit, so we can give them the floor again. But I thank you for the suggestion.
I, I needed that, thank you. There are two pieces of property, not to spoil the, to spoil the presentation here, but there are two pieces of property involved with the proposal. The Indian Trail Grove property and the Hyder West property. One is located in the agriculture reserve area, which is Hyder West. The Indian Trail Grove property is located within the Western Communities residential overlay. Just to walk through the entitlements on the property, the property, the original development order was approved with 4,872 total acres. We were conditioned to provide 640 acres to the Indian Trail Improvement District, which we have provided in Adidas and Escrow. We were required to have 1,068 acres of the property set aside for ag water resources uses. That property is owned and controlled by GL. It is not under the ownership or control of Palm Beach County. Which left the remaining developable area at 3,164 acres, and as mentioned earlier in the questions, that's 3,897 units of entitlement. This is the approved conceptual master plan for the Indian Trail Grove property. As you can see, the same 640 and 1,068, and then the development parcels A through F on the development plan. This is the proposed Indian Trail Grove Development Plan. So the proposal before you today is to modify the plan of development for Indian Trail Grove as follows. First, the property is decreased in size by about five acres. There was a take by FPL associated with their solar array. We are still doing the 640 acres to the Indian Trail Improvement District. We are now proposing to convey 1,600 acres to Palm Beach County as part of both a agricultural hold with Hunley Farms, as well as a water resource project, which Mr. Lynn Lindahl will get up in a few minutes and walk you through. This area, oop. What's the, what's the, is there a, is the top one? It turned it off. The middle one. Oh, there we go. Thank you, I'm sorry. This is new. This 248 acres right here, which was also part of the previous development plan, is required now to be open space for the revised plan of development, because we are still required to meet the standards for the WCR overlay with regard to the open space requirements. There's three individual open space requirements. The 248 is utilized to meet that. To go ahead and address a question that's going to come from me, is, or come to me, is, is GL Homes utilizing any of the 1,600 acres which is being conveyed to Palm Beach County to also meet the open space requirement for the actual revised plan of development, a so-called double dip? And the answer is no. We are only utilizing the 1,600 acres as the off-site preservation and unit transfer for the proposal to develop the Hyder West property. That's the 248, as I mentioned, which leaves the developable area at 2,378 acres, and we are likewise reducing the number of units proposed at Indian Trail Grove from 3,897 to 2612. It's a reduction of 1,285 homes. And that is because we are utilizing this 1,600 acres for off-site preservation and the replacement of the unit. Earlier when we talked about in the ag reserve, it's one acre, one unit. Up here, it's .8 units per acre. So we have to offset that. This is the revised conceptual master plan that's before you, the 1,600 acres here, the open space area here. This is the 248 revised plan of development. So the prior plan of development was, went all the way over here. This area is now part of the 1,600 and the open space for the project. These are side-by-side comparisons of the property to scale, just to give everybody a reference point. Again, the, the concept is we are reducing the number of units at Indian Trail by 1,285, and we are proposing to build 1,277 homes at Hyder West. A thousand of them would be age-restricted. It's important to note, for purposes of this discussion, and I have some charts later in my presentation to show this, that Indian Trail Grove is family. The, the Hyder West proposal is a thousand units, age-restricted, it would be a Valencia, there's a, a traffic-associated reason for that, as well as 277 workforce housing units. On the northern edge, on the northern end of Hyder, which is staying as a hundred-acre preserved parcel, we are proposing to keep the 75 acres on the west side as preservation, and then we are setting up the east side, 25 acres for Palm Beach County to utilize as a future park. It is a land dedication. We are required to provide water, sewer, access, bring the site to developable grade so that when the county is ready to develop the property, the property is set up to develop. That leaves the 277 workforce housing units. On top of that, we have acreage being dedicated to Palm Beach County for public civic sites, 20 acres, the 277 workforce housing units, and then we have 12 acres that is set aside for private civic sites, which I will go into a little later. And there's the thousand-unit adult-restricted community. With that, I'm going to sit down and let Len walk you through the water project that's being proposed. It is the, you know, a big element of the public benefit of the proposal that's before you today, so I wanted him to go through that, and I'll come back up when he's done. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name is Leonard Lindahl. I'm with McFicker Consulting. I'm a professional engineer, registered in the state of Florida. I'd like to discuss the Indian Trails Groves Water Resource Project.
Hold on, Mr. Mayor, I have a quick.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
I just want to amend my disclosure since I met with Leonard Lindahl, I didn't mention it, so I couldn't remember who it was. I couldn't remember the name, so.
Yes, sir.
Leonard Lindahl.
Yes, sir. I'd like to begin by discussing and walking through how water moves up in the north end of the county. Excess water flows down a canal called the LA Canal, which meets up with the C-51 Canal and flows out a structure called S-155 into Lake Worth Lagoon. So that's excess water. During the wet season, there's too much water that flows into Lagoon, so Lagoon becomes too fresh. So one of the objectives of the Lake Worth Lagoon restoration, a major objective, is to capture and store water that would otherwise go to Lagoon, so that you can store it and not have it get so fresh. When it gets too fresh, it disrupts the ecological and environmental habitat that's in the lagoon and the central part of Lagoon. The City West Palm Beach operates a pump station that lifts water up from the LA Canal, flows it down a canal called the M Canal that's highlighted, and goes into grassy waters. From there, they can move it into their water supply system, Clear Lake, as well as, they also operate with South Florida Water Management District, a structure that can make deliveries up to the northwest fork of the Locks Hatch River, the Wild and Scenic River, to meet minimum flows and levels. Indian Trail Improvement District has two points of discharge. One point goes out to the west through their M1 impoundment. Second point goes down to the south to that C-51 Canal that then flows out to Lake Worth In restoration discussions, the M Canal is called Flowway 1. That movement of water from the LA through the M Canal to grassy waters and up to the river or to the City West Palm Beach Water Supply System is called Flowway 1. As part of the approved SERP Locks Hatch River Restoration Plan, there will be a connection that will be constructed from the Indian Trail MO Canal up to the C-18 West Leg that's highlighted here in light blue. That connection will allow water in the MO Canal.
Len, slow down. These people are not necessarily experts like you.
Okay. This will allow water from the MO Canal and the basin, the north basin of Indian Trails, to move up through what's considered Flowway 2, and make deliveries up the C-18 West Leg. So you have two different routes to deliver water. One currently, and then another one that would come on in the future. Palm Beach County has recently gone into an agreement with Palm Beach Aggregates to purchase two cells. It's called Cell 12 and 13. I believe it was two or three Board of County Commission meetings ago. And as part of that, you're under contract to acquire about 14,800 acre feet of storage. That storage is regional storage that, as I described, will capture water that would otherwise go to Lake Worth Lagoon, store it, and then release it, be able to release it for general public benefit and water supply benefit. In 2010, there was a study that was completed by South Florida Water Management District and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and all the local stakeholders. That project, that study, had, again, Flowway 1, which moves down the M Canal, Flowway 2, which moves down the MO Canal with a connection up to the C-18 West Leg, as well as, that study included a connection that goes from the LA to the MO Canal. That's where the GL proposed property is, and that's what I'll be talking about in the next several slides. That study also included the LA Reservoir. The LA Reservoir was a reservoir that was purchased by South Florida Water Management District in 2007. The purpose of it was to store regional water like I described, that was coming down the LA Canal and flowing out to the Lake Worth Lagoon. The capacity of that reservoir is 45,000 acre feet approximately. So it was a major storage search tank that as water, excess water flowed out to tide, it would capture it, store it, and then make releases up through Flowway 1 and Flowway 2. This was an agreed-upon, tentatively-selected plan that was going to move forward and be part of the Northern Locks Hatch River Water Restoration Project in 2010. What circled in red is the LA Reservoir. That was repurposed in 2013, 12 and 13, to be the LA Flow Equalization Basin. And in doing so, it stores water and delivers water through the stormwater treatment areas that the South Florida Water Management District operates. The reason why it was repurposed is as part of a settlement to meet water quality in the Everglades. So the major storage feature of that recommended plan in 2010 was removed from the plan and repurposed to satisfy Everglades restoration. So as part of that, the South Florida, South Florida Water Management District had to put in a replacement project. That project is called Mecca Reservoir, and that's what's currently in the approved Locks Hatch River Plan. I'll show that in the next slide. Mecca is not near and not connected to the LA and C-51, so it's not taking excess water that would otherwise have gone to Lagoon. It's using water that's excess in Indian Trail Improvement District primarily, storing it and releasing it to the river. So the scope of the restoration project shrunk. This is the approved federal plan to restore the Locks Hatch River, and you can see that there is Mecca in the red circle, and that's a much, much smaller reservoir. And the flow of water down the. And the flow of water down the L-8 out to Lagoon is not captured. The Mecca just stores the local water from Indian Trails. So as a result, Palm Beach County expressed concerns over the lack of improvement with Lake Worth Lagoon as compared to the two thousand and ten plan. They wrote a letter, and this is highlighted in red, that says that there should be more that should be done with the Lake Worth Lagoon. They wanted to see more improvements. So Palm Beach County, as part, while the restoration plan in two thousand and nineteen was, was going through the process to getting approval, Palm Beach County hired Kim Lee Horn and did the locally-preferred options, which were finalized, they went through a whole suite of analysis, but there are three that were locally-preferred, and they were titled PB One in your top left, PB Two in the top right, and PB Three in the bottom. As you see, all three of these projects include a connection from the L-8 to the MO Canal. This was Palm Beach County's initiative to try to modify the proposed approved plan. So all of these include, two of them include, number two and number three include deep storage out west in the C-51, which at the time was not really thought of being doable, but now Palm Beach County actually has deep storage out west. And then PB One included storage within the L-8 and the MO Connection. And today, we have, like I said, Cell Twelve and Thirteen, which is now under contract to be owned by Palm Beach County. I'm gonna zoom in on the Cypress Grove Community Development District, which is within the red box. This is something that Kevin already showed. It's the proposed approved modified site plan. And flow within this area of water, you have the L-8 which discharges water down the western side of Cypress Grove Community Development District. Cypress Grove Community Development District brings water in for water supply, as well as discharges it for flood control through one main canal that runs east and west and bisects the district. That's a major canal, and it's used both for water supply. There's pump stations to lift it up when water's needed, and then there's gravity structures to discharge it back out when there's excess water. There's also a much, much smaller connection down in the south that connects to the L-8 As part of us looking at and evaluating the properties, you can see in the green with the hash, as Kevin described, that is the dedicated property that's gonna go to the county, the sixteen-hundred acres. Santa Rosa Groves has flooding problems historically, so we did not look at using the southern green piece. There's actually quite a bit of landfall from north to south, and we did not want to exacerbate any of the flooding problems in Santa Rosa Groves. And since the north piece and the south piece are separate, we decided to put all of the water project on the north piece. So this is a site plan of the water project in Cypress Groves. You can see the north piece has the, has the proposed impoundment and hatched. This is a total of about approximately eight-hundred acres. It'll store about two-thousand-four-hundred acres-feet of water at three feet deep. That will be its normal full operation. When a storm comes, it'll go up to four feet deep, and then it'll bleed back down, just like all of our developments do with our stormwater systems. It fills up, and then it bleeds back down. So it'll have a maximum depth of approximately four feet, but the standard, the set pool maximum is three feet. And this can be operated as, and it's being designed so that it can be operated as a polishing treatment marsh, so that it can be operated approximately two feet deep, which I'll get into here in the next several slides. This includes a shared levee between, on the west side, between Indian Trail Improvement District and impoundment, so we will be constructing Indian Trails Improvement District's eastern levee at the same time that we're constructing our western levee. We'll be constructing their whole eastern side. It includes three new pump stations that are thirty-thousand-gallon-per-minute pump stations, that's sixty-seven CFS, two gravity discharge structures that I'll explain in the next slide, as well as a connection from Indian Trail Improvement District's proposed six-hundred-and-forty-acre, their new impoundment that they are going to be constructing in the future, into our projects, that when that impoundment is constructed, it can actually flow into our impoundment and give Indian Trails more flood protection. So how does the water move in this area, and what routes do you have? Like I just described, the first route, which actually is a benefit directly to Indian Trail and all of the M-one basin and, and Indian Trail Improvement District, is a connection from their future impoundment. So when they get finished with it, they will be able to flow from that future impoundment into our impoundment and provide more flood protection. During normal operation, the water can be brought into the Community Development District, flowed through the treatment marsh, and then go back and be discharged back into the M Canal, so that you have better water quality being treated and discharged into grassy waters, which ultimately goes into the West Palm Beach Water Treatment, Water Supply System. Just to give a perspective, the water quality in the L-8, and I have some slides on this, in the L-8 Canal is approximately a hundred-and-fifty parts per billion. With the treatment marsh, it will take it down to approximately fifty parts per billion. When that connection by South Florida Water Management District gets complete, you can then also route water up Flowway Two, as described, and go up to the C-18 West. And you can also discharge it back into the Community Development District, where you can have treated water, then be discharged, and have less loading going into Lake Worth So the benefits are that it can store and cleanse water that goes to grassy waters, the City West Palm Beach Water Supply System, the Northwest Fork of Locks Hatch River, when that connection is complete. It provides the critical connection from the L-8 to the MO Canal, which has been on previous plans, as well as a desire by Palm Beach County when they were looking at their locally-preferred options. It provides Indian Trail direct drainage improvements with this connection. They'll have the ability to have an increased flood protection to their community. It improves Indian Trails' availability for firefighting. They have to maintain their canals at a given elevation, because to fight fires, they have to go in and pull water out of the canals. This is an ability to provide and supplement water into the canals. It can reduce discharges to Lake Worth Lagoon, restoring, as I mentioned, and diverting water that would otherwise go to Lagoon. And it can improve, if you use that last flow route, it can improve the water quality that gets discharged in Lagoon. From an ownership and operation, there's a draft memorandum of understanding that has been distributed to Palm Beach County, the City West Palm Beach, Indian Trail Improvement District, and Cypress Grove Community Development District. How the memorandum of understanding operates, it's all based off, operations or costs are based off of requests. So the City of West Palm Beach would not pay anything into the program and into the operation of this facility unless they were using it. So they have to request to use it, and then upon that request being agreed upon, they would start paying into that use. Likewise, if Indian Trails would like to discharge into the M Canal, that would be a requested use that they would pay for. Indian Trails and Cypress Groves have staff that can operate their surface water management system, so the MOU is set up so that Indian Trails operates the pump connection that goes into the M Canal. The other facilities would be operated by Cypress Grove Community Development District, but owned by Palm Beach County. And this design is coordinated with Palm Beach County, heavily with Palm Beach County, as well as, we're going to go through South Florida Water Management District review, which is called Dr. Checks, so that when we are finished, in the event that the operation of this facility wants to be turned over to Palm Beach County and they want to accept it, it satisfies all their planned specifications and standards as an acceptable project for them to own and operate. There will be water quality sampling as part of the MOU and as part of the permit that we need to get from South Florida Water Management District. We'll definitely have to sample water from the connection, from the L Canal into the M Canal, that's going into the M Canal, which is going and feeding a public water supply system. There'll have to be water quality for there, as well as, there'll have to be water quality for a given period and frequency to be determined as far as the inflow and outflow of the reservoir to see how it's performing. Just to touch on water quality, here's some stations that, and data that were sampled from two thousand and sixteen through two thousand and twenty. You can see that Culvert Ten A is in the top left. It's up by Lake Okachobee. So that's where Lake Okachobee connects and discharges water into the L-8. The mean phosphorus from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty was a hundred-and-sixty-seven parts per billion. That's what the lake water quality is. As you move into the M Canal, which is the circle that's on the far right in grassy waters, that's actually at the entrance to grassy waters. So at the entrance to grassy waters for those years, the phosphorus was ninety-eight parts per billion. Within the MO, and One Thirty-Fifth and Forty-Fifth, which are all internal to Indian Trail Improvement District, the phosphorus levels, as you can see, the mean phosphorus levels were all in the high twenties to thirties. Significant difference and improvement between those levels of nutrient loadings. This is a graph showing what the trend for Lake Okachobee is. Lake Okachobee has had more and more algal blooms, as we all know, read in newspaper, witness and have to live with. Those algal blooms are the result of nutrient loadings within the lake. Over time, the lakes, if you look at the blue line, the trend is that it's continuing to go up, and it will continue to go up. The total maximum daily load, how much loading can come into Lake Okachobee, is about, is one-hundred-and-forty metric tons per year. That includes rainfall, which is thirty-five metric tons. So there's a hundred-and-five metric tons by law that should be coming into Lake Okachobee. They're five times that right now. So the lake is only going to get worse and worse right now. There's not a significant project that's being looked at that's in construction to clean up the legacy phosphorus in the lake. The state is trying to do as much as they can to clean up the water that flows into the lake from the north, essentially all through the Kissimmee Valley. However, the projects that it takes to clean up that order of magnitude are very significant large regional projects, similar to the stormwater treatment areas that we would have on the south side of the lake. So you can only assume that that trend is going to continue to go up. So as you think of that, this is the water supply source for grassy waters and the city. When you turn the pump on at Control Two, and you're making a release out of the lake to provide water according to the permit, this trend is only going up. So as the protection for grassy waters and the city's water supply system might be, whether they want to do use it or not right now, if you look into the future, five, ten, fifteen years, and how long it takes to get a water treatment project built in this area to treat water that would otherwise go into grassy waters, there's nothing that's on the horizon from the state. There's nothing else that's on the horizon from the county. So as this continues to increase, you're going to expect higher and higher levels of phosphorus to come into grassy waters. So the impoundment design, it can be used for two to three feet of storage, and if it's used for two to three feet of storage, then it has a relatively long detention time, because it will sit in there, so it would reduce about fifty-five percent of the phosphorus. If you treat it as a treatment marsh, which is more of what the county staff and us have been discussing in detail, actually, we have designed it for a treatment marsh. It'll be laser-leveled. There'll be distribution canals for inflow, distribution canals to collect it, so that it can, there'll be plantings that are going to occur, vegetation management that will occur, things of that nature. So this will be a treatment marsh. You'll get greater than sixty percent phosphorus load. Like I said, you should be able to go from somewhere around a hundred-and-forty, fifty, down to somewhere around fifty parts per billion. Significant increase in your phosphorus loading going into grassy waters. Operation and maintenance. We have two budgets that have been discussed, coordinated with Palm Beach County, just like the design has been coordinated with Palm Beach County. One is looking at six-thousand acre-feet of storage. That would provide, that would cost approximately two-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand dollars. The other is for fourteen-thousand-eight-hundred acre-feet of storage. So that is treating all of the water that's in Cell Twelve and Thirteen effectively, and moving it through this system and treating it. That would cost four-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. Those costs include mowing, telemetry, vegetation management, pumping costs, pump station overhauls, long-term maintenance, and things of that nature. With regards to our permitting status, we submitted a conceptual permit in February of two thousand and twenty-three. We got a request for additional information in March of twenty-three. We withdrew the conceptual application in July of twenty-three, and in August of twenty-three, we submitted for a new, instead of conceptual, a new construction and operation permit, full permit, with updated plans based off of the current design. We received a request for additional information on September sixth. We have ninety days to respond to that request. So that's sitting, waiting for our response based off what occurs today. We have had coordination with the district regulatory, through regulatory pre-application meetings. We've had discussions with their operational staff on how this project will operate. We've briefed the entire executive office, and we've done, as I mentioned, we're coordinating and have a dedicated manager to walk us through the Dr. Checks, so that in the event that the district would want to take this over in the future, the facility is designed to their standards. Thank you very much.
All right. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Leonard, thanks for the presentation. Just a couple of questions. I just want to understand a little bit more. First of all, so if I'm correct, there are how many parties to potential this agreement?
Four.
Okay. And who are the parties?
I'll, I'll pull it up, sir. The four parties are Palm Beach County, City West Palm Beach, Indian Trail Improvement District, and Cypress Grove Community Development District.
Has the South Florida Water Management District signed this MOU?
No, sir. They're not a party to it, and we have not received our permit. As part of our permitting, we'll have to have an approved operational plan and MOU with regards to that. So that'll all occur with our permitting.
Has Cypress Grove's Community Development District signed an MOU?
No, sir. Still in draft form.
And has the City of West Palm Beach signed the MOU?
No, sir.
From the draft that the city received, I know you said that this project will reduce the water quality in the L-8 Canal from a hundred-and-twenty, a hundred-and-fifty. Is it a hundred-and-fifty?
It varies. It goes, depends on how the mix is with the Lake Okachobee and with the other runoff that comes in from Corbett area. So normally, you put it as a range. I'm saying a hundred-and-fifty, but it's, it's normally a range of anything from probably a hundred-and-twenty up to two-hundred, or a hundred-and-ten up to, up to two-hundred. You know, it can vary depending upon what the conditions are, but an average number, I believe, would be approximately a hundred-and-four, a hundred-and-fifty. Yes, sir.
And then you, I think you said that they would reduce it to fifty parts per billion. Is that kind of like your...
Yes, sir.
I guess from the City of West Palm Beach, has GL submitted an operational plan describing how this function, this system will function?
We have had weekly calls with all four parties and have been discussing openly with all of the parties how the system will operate, and we have a draft operational plan that has been sent out to... plan that has been sent out to all the parties that describes conditions of operation, water levels, things of that nature. So there is a draft one. Yes, sir.
Has the City of West Palm Beach received that draft operational plan?
Yes, sir.
Who did you provide it to, to the city?
To Scott Kelly and Victor Croce. Croce, the U, Croce, sir.
Croce.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I do want to find out if the city has received this operational plan from GL. So I don't know how to do that, but I do want to find out if from the city they've received this operational plan.
Mr. Rutter, can you have, can you have staff reach out to the City of West Palm Beach and see if they received Mr. Croce or Scott Kelly received this plan?
We'll work on getting that confirmation. Yes.
Okay. So we'll, can we get that back? We'll get, staff will get that back to you.
Thank you. I think you stated that you had submitted the ERP application with the district and I guess in February of 2023. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I'm going to pull it up on the slide. Yes, sir. That was a conceptual?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
And then you withdrew, you withdrew it, when did you withdraw that application?
July.
Okay. And in regards to the South Florida, I guess you resubmitted your application. Is that correct?
We withdrew the conceptual application after our transmittal hearing. And then we submitted a construction operation permit after our, after our transmittal hearing.
The district requested additional information, but you have not provided that to the district?
Correct. They requested additional information on September 6.
And so right here today, you have not responded to the district. Is that correct?
That's correct.
In regards to the city's questions regarding, like one, I'll go into the excess water in the L8 Basin. There are some questions that the city asked. Have you seen those questions that the city asked?
Yes, sir.
And have you responded to the city in writing in regards to those questions that the city asked?
We, with Palm Beach County, we have. Yes, sir. Palm Beach County responded with, with us.
So is it the county who's responding or, or GL responding?
The county sent the, sent a memorandum. Yes, sir.
So those questions that were asked by the city, have they been answered?
We are pending a meeting with the city. It was agreed upon that we would have a meeting with the city with their consultants to answer those questions. Their consultants are available in November. So that's when we're planning to have a meeting to address all those questions.
So I'll go into one of the questions that I'm looking at. It says, "It is likely this request will, will involve a combination of historical data analysis and hydrologic modeling." They ask, "What analysis was performed to estimate the availability of excess water?" Was there an analysis that was performed? And has the city seen that analysis?
That's what was submitted by Palm Beach County. Yes, sir.
So you're saying that the city has seen this analysis?
They've seen a response to the question explaining it, and it was not modeling, but an explanation of how to determine excess water. Yes, sir.
Was there analysis done?
Yes.
Going into, again, the city asks, "What analysis was performed to ensure that these withdrawals will not interfere with the quantity, timing, and distribution of water from the L8 Basin and quality of water from the L8 Basin available to the city at control?" Do we have answers to these in writing and answering each specific question from the city?
That's what, that's the reason why we're going to have the meeting is that we, on our phone call as a group, said, "Let's have a meeting so that we can sit down, have all the parties there because actually Indian Trail might have other questions as well." And we will address them all together in the meeting. So that's what this meeting with the city will be in November.
So today, we're supposed to vote to approve this water project. And there's been no analysis, no meeting, no MOU from any of the parties.
We have a draft MOU that the city?
Yes, you have a draft.
We have had numerous phone calls. We have numerous phone calls with the city to coordinate with them with regards to that they understand what the project is, so that they understand what it is with Scott Kelly and Victor. Yes, sir.
In regards to the project design, I know the city asks, "What are, what are the project's goals in terms of metrics?" Have you produced something in writing that states the goals in terms of metrics to the City of West Palm Beach in writing?
Not in terms of metrics because it's based off of how much you get use of it. And that's what we discussed on our group calls.
And the city asks, "Was a cost benefit, benefit analysis performed? Did you do a cost benefit analysis in writing to the City of West Palm Beach?"
No, sir. That will be a topic of our meeting with the city.
In regards to rot, rot one discharges to the M1 Canal, the city asked, "What analysis was performed to estimate the quantity and timing of these discharges?" Was analysis done in writing to answer this question?
No, sir. I believe that that question was, all of the rest of the questions that the city's had were all going to be part of the November meeting.
In regards to the consumptive use of water, the city asked, I guess the project narrative states, "The need for consumptive use permit is not permitted as the system is intended to only be used for water that would otherwise be wasted to tide and no guaranteed allocation is being requested." The city asked, "What is the legal basis or precedent for that conclusion?" Did you provide that answer to the City of West Palm Beach in writing that provides the legal basis or precedent for that conclusion?
No, sir.
Thank you. In regards to the water quality, the city asks, "What treatment mechanisms will be employed at the ITGWRP impoundment to reduce the ambient concentration of total phosphorus in water withdrawn from the L8 Canal from 120, 120 to 150 parts per billion to 45 to 60 parts per billion?" And they said, "What nutrient loading analysis was performed to confirm this treatment efficiency?" Did you provide in writing to the city, "What nutrient loading analysis was performed to confirm this treatment efficiency?"
No, sir. That's part of the meeting.
Thank you. Next, the city asks, "Describe the algae bloom control plan for the ITGWRP impoundment. How will the system be operated in the event of an algae bloom or presence of algae toxins?" Did you provide a response to the City of West Palm Beach in writing of that question?
No, sir.
Thank you. The city asked, "What water quality monitoring program is proposed for water arriving at and leaving the ITGWRP impoundment?" Did you provide an answer to the city in writing of this answer?
No, sir. We've discussed several of these, but it's all going to be part of the November meeting.
Thank you. Next, the city asks, "What is the anticipated water quality of the water once it reaches the L, L Canal Pump Station? What is the anticipated water quality of discharges to the M Canal? What nutrient loading analysis was performed to confirm this estimated water quality?" Did you provide an answer to the city in writing of this question?
No, sir.
Thank you. Next, the City of West Palm Beach asked, "What water quality monitoring program is proposed for water arriving at and leaving the L Canal Pump Station?" Did you provide an answer to the city in writing?
No, sir. That's all part of the meeting.
Thank you.
Can we just stipulate it?
Next, the city asked, "Will GL Homes be able to guarantee that the water discharge to the M Canal at the L Canal Pump Station will have a total phosphorus concentration of 45 to 50 parts per billion? If not, what is the total phosphorus concentration that GL Homes can guarantee in the water discharge to the M Canal?" Did you provide an answer to the city regarding this question?
Not in writing.
Thank you. In regards to the Laxahachie River Watershed Restoration Plan, the city asked again, "What analysis was performed to show that the ITGWRP will not shift increased discharges to Leinhardt or S46 by reducing discharge to Lake Worth Lagoon by making a connection between Lake Okeechobee, the L8 Canal, and the Flowway 2?" Did you provide that analysis to the city?
No, sir.
Thank you. Next, the city asked, "The Laxahachie River Watershed Restoration Plan approved alternate 5R has a water supply component to the M Canal from the L8 Basin using a pump station on the M1 Canal as replacement water discharge from grassy waters preserve to the Laxahachie River G161?" The city came back and asked you, "What analysis was performed to determine the impact of the ITGWRP on this project component?" Did you provide an answer to the city in writing?
No, sir.
Thank you. And finally, the city asked, "Is the district willing to join," they didn't properly, it says, "Is the district willing to join the MOU for the purposes outlined above?" Is there an MOU from the South Florida Water Management District for the outline that the city had asked?
No, sir.
And it hasn't been signed?
None of the MOUs have been signed. It's in draft form.
But if we approve this today, GL gets to build or do a water project, but all of these questions, that's supposed to, because when I, when, when this issue came during the last meeting, you know, we talked about this being, you know, to address water for the City of West Palm Beach, that we're going to provide, you know, opportunity for water quality for the City of West Palm Beach. And the city sent you a document with questions that you have not answered any of these questions in writing to the city. Is that correct?
The water availability, as I described, was, was submitted by the county. All the other ones are part of a meeting that's going to occur in November.
But is this the county who's entering into this deal? Or is this you who wants to, you said that this is a water benefit project, but you, you've had, what, how many years have you been working on this water project? And you have done none of this analysis today for us to approve this, and none of this has been done. And then there's a future meeting in November that if we vote this today, you go and you've, you've built, you go in and you approve this, and then there's no MOU between the Indian Trail Improvement District, no MOU between Cypress Grove or the, or the South Florida Water Management District. There's no MOU. So who would control that MOU once we approve it today? GL, GL controls, because if we vote for it, GL controls what happens?
If you don't mind, let me answer that question, Commissioner. The MOU is four parties. Palm Beach County is one of those parties to the MOU. The permit process of South Florida requires an operational plan to have the permit issued. So the MOU, anybody who is utilizing facilities of another entity, City of West Palm Beach, Indian Trail Improvement District, Cypress Grove Development District, they all have to be a party to that operational plan. So the permit cannot be issued. We are not starting any construction of any project involved with this swap until we have a permit in hand.
And just, just, Kevin, we're supposed to find out from the city if they've received the operational plan that Mr. Lindahl stated that he submitted to the City of West Palm Beach?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Before we go to Vice Mayor Sachs and then Commissioner Moreno, I do need to amend my disclosure. I also had verbal communications with Linda Rosenthal. Okay. Vice Mayor, your record.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lindell, you stated that there was not going to be any assistance from local or state or federal officials when it came to this water issue that we are apparently are suffering from. Which local and which local officials outside of what Commissioner Matt Bernard has spoken about, but are there other local official, officials that you reached out to, sir?
I'm sorry. Can you repeat the question?
Sure, I will. And I'll, I'll speak a little slower. In your statement?
Yes.
You said that you reached out to local, state, and federal officials with regard to a water issue that we were having here in Palm Beach County, and there was no assistance coming. And the question is, which local officials, other than what we have already discussed with Commissioner Bernard's questioning on the City of West Palm Beach and South Florida Water Management, were there other local officials that you reached out to in that statement?
Sorry. Just to maybe, I guess, restate, we have done briefings with a lot of officials. We've done the Laxahachie River.
Can I speak up a little bit?
We have done briefings with many different entities with regards to this project. I believe the statement that you're referring that I said is related to if there is a water quality treatment project planned for this area. This is a water quality treatment project. And when I was talking about Lake Okeechobee and the trend lines, I said that currently, when you look at what's on the planning horizon, the South Florida Water Management District, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, I am not aware of another treatment project by Palm Beach County that is planned in this particular location to deal with the inflow of the water going into the M Canal. I believe that's, that's what I said.
Sir, did you reach out to any other local officials, Indian Trails, anybody else other than what is already?
Well, we've talked about this with Indian Trails. Absolutely. We've discussed this with Indian Trails.
Do you have it in writing, sir?
Have what in writing?
Any of your requests, whether they were going to help out with this water issue, sir?
The Indian Trails is part, Indian Trails Improvement District is part of the memorandum of understanding to operate this project. So they are very aware of it.
But they, but sir, excuse me. We got a whole team here. That's great. That's great. Okay. We're going to get Larry up here in a minute. Seriously, sir, you said that there was no help coming from local or state or federal officials. Let's put the local aside. Let's look at our state officials. Did you reach out to any members of our legislative delegation, state representatives, state senators, as to whether the state of Florida was going to have any assistance in this water issue that we are suffering apparently from in Palm Beach County, sir?
What I said is that I'm not aware of any projects that are proposed in this location.
Did you reach, how did you reach that conclusion unless you reached out, let me just, so that you understand my question, I'm going to speak slower. Which local officials, did state officials, did you reach out to, state representatives or state senators with regard to whether or not you, they were going to help because you said that there was no help coming from the state of Florida?
I said that there are no planned projects, I believe.
There are no planned projects, and you received that information from?
Following all of the projects in this area. I'm a professional engineer that deals in water resources, so I'm not aware of any projects in this area.
And did you reach out to any of our state representatives?
No, ma'am.
Or state senators?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Do you know, sir, if Palm Beach County's legislative delegation has money in our request for water improvement issues here in Palm Beach County?
Yes, they have money in their request.
Pardon me, sir?
I believe that Palm Beach County routinely has money in their request, yes, ma'am.
Have you reached out to our legislative delegation or our lobbying team as to whether or not we have money requested for help? And just let me finish, sir, because-
Yes, ma'am.
They can't take down everything. Whether or not we have any help coming from the state of Florida for our water project?
That's only through discussions with your staff.
Discussions with the staff of state representatives?
No.
State senators?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so, so we don't, so you've reached out to staff of whom?
Palm Beach County.
Just let me finish, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I'm talking slow. You have, you have reached out to staff of our state delegation in terms of whether there's going to be a request for money coming in from the state of Florida?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Did you reach out, you said, sir, that there was no assistance coming from the federal government in the president's plan for infrastructure or in any of our congressional delegation in Washington? That there would be any help, you said there was going to be no help from the federal government to Palm Beach County's water issues, sir?
I'm not aware of there being any help, no, ma'am.
Have you reached out to Congressman, just, because maybe you did?
No.
Did you reach out to Congresswoman Lois Frankel, who used to represent the city of West Palm Beach?
No, ma'am.
Did you reach out to Congressman Mast, who probably represents the north area of this county, sir?
No, ma'am.
Did you reach out to the U.S. Corps of Engineers and the generals who provide the assistance to the U.S. Corps of Engineers, sir?
No, ma'am.
So with regard to whether your statement should be valid, that there is no assistance coming from state-
I'm not aware.
Or federal officials for Palm Beach County's water issue, the answer is, maybe it isn't valid, because we don't know.
Right, I said I'm not aware of any projects that are planned to help this situation.
Thank you, sir.
So I'd like to clarify that.
Commissioner Moreno, then Commissioner Woodward. You're next, after, I don't, no, I got you down. Thank you.
It's going to be a long day. So I have the 2018 Loxahatchee River watershed local initiative options that was prepared by Ken Todd, our, at the time, water manager, water resource manager of Palm Beach County. This references the GL land, is that correct?
Yes, the 2018?
The 2018.
With Ken Todd? Yes, I believe so.
And the 2019 Water Resources Task Force meeting, that was the Loxahatchee River Restoration Local Initiative and MECA site evaluation, also references the GL land as something that is a key piece of land in order to do this initiative. Is that correct? Right here, GL reserve flowway to capture excess ITID water and convey north to M Canal. I can answer, but by just, I'm just putting this into the record.
The Water Resource Task Force at that time was reviewing the options that I presented, and those options included a connection.
Correct. Also, the Water Resources Task Force meeting that followed up in 2020, which was after the Kimley Horn study, also references the GL empowerment, integrated with ITID empowerment, and comes up with a value for the whole project, not just the GL land portion of it, but the whole project, of anywhere between $450 to $500 million. Are you familiar with this?
I've seen that presentation, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So basically, it has been on everybody's radar that this land that we are talking about right now is a necessary piece for not just the Loxahatchee River, but also for grassy waters, for also Lake Okeechobee, for cells 12 and 13, for the, all the connections. This piece of land has been in the mix with all of those discussions, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. However, in order to do all of this, we either have to have a private partnership or the county needs to own the land. And if we do not do the swap, this land stays in the hands of GL, and they don't have to do, they don't have to do anything with it, is that correct?
Yes, it stays privately held with GL Homes. That's correct.
Okay, so if, if the, if in the future, the county decided they wanted to have a water feature on that land, they would then have to buy the land from GL and then have to pay for the construction of the water feature themselves? And who knows what the price tag is?
That's what I would assume would have to happen, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I know that I said, when I first walked into this office, and this was a discussion, I said the only way I would do a swap of land of this nature was if there was regional impact. And there was a reference made to the Kissimmee Valley because of its flow into the, into Lake Okeechobee. This is sending water north, sending water south, so this would be a project, and Mr. Lynton, you can answer this question too, this would be a project of regional impact?
Yes.
Okay. This is not where we're taking 10 acres in the ag reserve and switching, and swapping for 10 acres someplace else. This is a true regional impact. This is not taking a little tiny piece of property and swapping it for another piece of property. That's not a question, that's a comment. Mr. Lindell, can you give us a little bit of your background as an engineer? Because you've, you know, we don't know a whole lot of water, so we're taking it that you're an expert. Could you give us what your background is?
Yes, ma'am. I was born-
Could you talk into the microphone?
Yes.
I don't do it myself, so I have to remind myself.
I was born and raised in Palm Beach County. My father had an engineering firm. I graduated with a bachelor's and master's in civil engineering. My master's is focused on hydraulics and hydrology. I have worked as a professional engineer in private practice. I also worked at South Florida Water Management District as the Assistant Executive Director. I've been on the board of two engineering firms and represented those firms sitting on their board and have designed stormwater management systems for communities and things of that nature.
And if this is approved, the construction of this water facility will be done by whom?
If this is approved, the construction will be done by a contractor that GL will hire to do the construction for the water resource facility.
Would this contractor also be somebody that South Florida Water Management District is familiar with? Because I'm trying to, there is a lot of misinformation and disinformation that has been, you know, that is out there. One of those is that GL Homes is building a water project, which we know, you guys are, you're home builders, you're not facility, water facility builders. So who would be the actual people doing it?
Thank you, Commissioner. The answer is, we hire subcontractors that do these types of projects on behalf of South Florida or other governmental entities. So we are not building, we being GL Homes, are not out there building the water project. We hire subcontractors that do this work as part of their profession, just as we've hired Lynn and just as we've hired Maak Ruse to do the design, who does design for these facilities on behalf of these government agencies.
Thank you. And again, going back to all of these Water Resource Task Force meetings that have indicated we need a water facility in the north end of the county, we can't do this unless this land comes to the county, is that correct? Or we can't do this without it costing us an arm and a leg? Maybe two arms or two legs.
You're asking that question of me?
Yes.
So in order to do a water project, you must have the land to do a water project. The county was considering doing a, I call it the water bond. The water bond, that was up for discussion by this commission, was decided to not do that bond. But there was 20 million allocated in that water bond for a project just like this, and it is noted in the document itself that 20 million absolutely, positively requires additional partners such as South Florida or Army Corps or other willing partners to participate, because 20 million doesn't cover that cost.
Thank you. I have so many more questions. What is the difference between a treatment marsh and a stormwater treatment area?
The treatment marsh is operated at a lower level so that the vegetation can assist in the nutrient uptake. And then the other scenario that I described was something that's a little deeper.
And we're not talking about a stormwater treatment area here at all, correct? We're just talking about a treatment marsh? So these are two different animals?
Well, the stormwater treatment area is something that I don't want to get confused with what South Florida Water Management District operates, and that is that they have different, and planned for different vegetation types to satisfy and to meet a water quality target. This facility is not going to meet a 10 parts per billion water quality target that's mandated by court, by law. So this facility will be looking at just mass removal of the amount that it can remove.
And without it, the county accomplishes nothing in the north end, is that correct? If we don't have a treatment facility, we accomplish absolutely nothing.
Like I said, I'm not aware of any other treatment facility that's planned in the north end, that's on the horizon, and they take a while to get planned, and they take a while to get funded and put into motion.
Okay. I'll have more questions, but I'm done for now. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. And then we'll have Commissioner Woodward, followed by Commissioner Baxter.
Thank you. Where to start? I have a few pages here. I'd like to go back to the phosphorus load. You said normally it's around 150?
Yes, ma'am.
And this project could take it down to 50? I'm not a water expert, so the algae bloom, is that caused by phosphorus?
Algae blooms are caused by heavy nutrients, of which phosphorus is one of them, yes, ma'am.
So how, what would be the normal phosphorus if we were to have an algae bloom moving through? What levels of phosphorus are we looking at?
It depends on the conditions, the heat, the wind, things like that for an algae bloom.
I mean, the parts per billion, your number. It's 150 normally, what does it go up to with an algae bloom?
It might not go up during an algae bloom. It's, given a certain condition underneath 150 parts per billion, if you have high heat, it might form on the surface. Algae blooms come and go, and they move around, so it's dependent upon a number of different climatic conditions, including the nutrients.
So how would this water project solve an algae bloom?
We're trying to decrease, I don't, we're not looking to bring algae into this project to solve it, to get rid of algae. We're looking to get rid of the nutrients. So if there's an algae bloom at the front of this project in the LA Canal, we would need to evaluate if we would want to bring it in and have the parties agree that, yes, we'd bring it in. We're not looking to treat algae in this project.
So you're looking to just treat nutrients-
Correct.
That are already in the water right now?
Correct. Just like the stormwater treatment area is South Lake, but not to the same level.
Okay, so this, this is for the drinking water for the city of West Palm Beach? And, I mean, you painted a dire picture here. I'm concerned if we're talking about, you know, clean water, clean drinking water for an entire city, hinging on this one project, why are our state partners, federal partners, why, why is there no one scrambling to make sure that this land doesn't go into development and turns into a water project, if it's so vital to keeping clean drinking water for an entire city?
Yeah, well, I'm talking about the water supply to grassy waters, which then goes into the city. And this is a long-term project, so I was saying, down the road in the future as things continue to get more and more trend and Lake Okeechobee discharges and more and more nutrients in Lake Okeechobee, that at some point, even if you, you might, as time goes on, want to use this project more and more and more to clean the water up.
So what modeling, I, there were a lot of questions that were asked earlier, I'm sorry. What modeling was done for this?
No modeling, this is based off of comparisons with other stormwater marshes.
Okay, because I'm on the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, and we had a great presentation just a few months back about a joint water project with the St. John's Water Management and South Florida Water Management and some of the counties north of us, and showed us extensive modeling and proof of concept and everything of what's about to happen, and getting state and federal funding for it. We're being asked to vote on something with, you know, speculation at this point. And, you know, do you even have a proof of concept of what we're, you're looking to build? Something that we can look to, that this is what it's done in another area?
Yeah, the, so there's been comparisons, we have evaluated this versus, along with your staff, versus the stormwater treatment areas that the South Florida Water Management District use, and evaluated the loading rates and things of that nature to arrive at the conclusion that this is something that will operate in a similar fashion.
So are you, are you telling us, though, that, that this, this piece of land is vital? And if we don't do this, then an entire city's clean drinking water is at risk at some time in the next 10, 15, 20 years?
I said that this can help out, keep the water clean, so that we might not end up with that. But the phosphorus levels in the lake are continuing to rise. That continues to go into grassy waters. I don't believe I said that the city, entire city's water supply system is at risk. I said that the grassy waters is something that cleans the water and transports the water into the city water supply system. And this is a source of water that goes into grassy waters. So as part of this, if phosphorus continues to increase, you don't want to hurt grassy waters, and this is a mechanism that can clean the water that would go into grassy waters, so that you don't have any impacts going into the city.
Well, I, we had our legislative session yesterday, and I got some numbers. And the state of Florida, last year, spent almost $5 billion with the Department of Environmental Protection. So I would think it would be on us to do our due diligence to make sure that our state and federal legislators know how important this particular issue is for grassy waters, for West Palm Beach. But, you know, to give up what we're being asked to give up in the ag reserves for, it could, it should, it might. And the best answer I've been able to get from anyone is if we don't do this, well, it won't be as good. To me, that's just not enough for this. There's a lot of money that has come into the county just this past year. Our legislative team that's here did a great job bringing some money back. Hopefully, that will continue. And if this is something that we should focus on, I think we should focus on. But what's being asked of it is just too much.
Thank you. Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. The questions that were asked earlier that you had said no to repeatedly, would that level of detail that was being asked, would that be provided prior to an approval in normal circumstances? Would you be able to enter into an MOU with the other cities, other entities, stakeholders involved in this water project prior to an approval?
We're, we're going to need to answer those questions before everybody signs the MOU. Yes, ma'am.
But what I'm asking is process. Would that normally happen prior to an approval by this board?
I'm not sure.
Have you been in discussions with Indian Trails?
Yes, ma'am.
Is South Florida Water Management District the only people that could run this water feature?
Uh, no, ma'am.
So should they choose after, if we were to approve, if they chose not to operate this? Or if we chose to have somebody, or you guys chose somebody else who would more want the project, would that be a possibility?
I guess there could be a possibility that another entity could come in besides Palm Beach County or South Florida Water Management District.
Have you spoken with Indian Trails Improvement District?
Significantly. I've spoken to them about all different kinds of items. Yes, ma'am.
Are they interested in operating it?
They have expressed that they, I believe, may want to consider operations of that, so it was something that was put out in one of their board meetings.
And if they operated it, would still, West Palm Beach still have the ability to come in and get a huge benefit from this project?
If you're operating in accordance with the MOU, as we have distributed, then it's based off requests, and the operator is just in control of the operation of it. It's not, you're still going to operate it based off of the water control plan that's attached to the draft MOU at this time.
So even though none of this is in writing yet, we probably have one or two, if not three, entities that could potentially run it? Is that correct?
Yes.
And so it would be a matter to a large part of paperwork after the fact or getting into agreements. And I would love to, I believe, at some point, Indian Trails is going to do a presentation to actually hear what they have to say in regards to this. I do know in our area, we have a huge drainage issue. This would help solve as well. And if you are not familiar with those numbers, I know Paul Linton and I have had several conversations. Do you know what they are currently permitted for, for drainage?
Indian Trails?
Correct.
Yes. And I know how your drainage system works, which is why we look to put in a structure that ties in your future 640 acres into this impoundment to help give some additional flood protection relief.
And how much are they currently permitted for? How many, I believe it's, forgive my-
There's 274 CFS. That's allowed to be discharged out to the west to the M1 impoundment. There's 200 CFS that's allowed to be discharged. So it's a total of 474 CFS that's allowed to be discharged to the south to C-51. And then with special permission by the district, they're allowed to do different CFS discharges, given the circumstances. And Indian Trail Improvement District is looking for one inch of discharge, like many of the other developments in the area and in South Florida. And they have evaluated and calculated that they need a total of 1,100 CFS of on-peak discharge or a total of 5,000 acre feet of storage to meet that.
And what's their deficit currently then?
Their deficit right now is 5,000 acre feet. When they finish their 640-acre impoundment, the construction of that, it will be 3,000 acre feet. If you add our impoundment to it, it'll take it to 2,000 acre feet is what the deficit would be.
And how many days of storage do they currently have?
It takes, well, currently with their M1 impoundment, with the inflow capacity that they have, it fills up in a day and a half, two days.
And what is recommended for resiliency of flooding and hurricanes and everything else that we get?
Again, the goal is to reach one inch per day of flood protection.
Of how many days?
I'm sorry?
For how many days?
Well, you'd have one inch of runoff relief for flood protection, which would be a combined of storage and stuff. So that's why they want the 5,000 acre feet.
Forgive me. Paul, do you mind?
So that basin waits in line for the capacity that he described. Generally, that takes five to seven days.
Oh, you wanted it to fill time. Okay. Sorry.
Looking for, yeah, five to seven days. And they're currently at one?
Yeah.
Which is a huge, huge problem in our area, acreage loss, hatchage. Drainage is, I can't even tell you how big of a problem that this would help solve in just that feature alone if we didn't then take a look at removing phosphorus from drinking water for West Palm Beach. It is detrimental not only to the homeowners, but also, I believe, and I won't put her on the spot, but I've had several conversations with a resident of Santa Rosa Groves. And when it floods in there, it kills all the nursery plants as well. So this is not just an issue for the residents and drainage, but also another agricultural issue that this could potentially be helping. So thank you for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Leonard, you had mentioned that you're a hydrologist, if I'm correct. Have you had the chance to do hydrological modeling and historical data and put it in writing for this item?
Hydrological modeling for this? No.
Okay. One more question. Commissioner Baxter had mentioned that, you know, like Indian Trail Improvement District could be one of the folks that can operate this project. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm getting slow. Maybe I'm hungry.
I'm trying to get you there.
And so, but, you know, like, when I spoke to some of the folks with Indian Trail Improvement District, they said like basically, in order for them to operate this model, they would want the city of West Palm Beach to agree on the State Road 7 extension.
But they expressed at the board meeting that they might want to operate it. I believe it was at their board meeting or in a meeting that we had on a, we have, like I said, weekly meetings with the four parties, that they might want to operate it. I didn't, we didn't talk about State Road 7. And from a modeling standpoint, Mark Ruse, who is the engineer of record for the impoundment, has done modeling with regards to hydraulics and hydrology as to, for the design of the impoundment. So that has, that has been done.
Just letting you know that. I know for me, that's what they told me, is that they would want the city of West Palm Beach to agree with the state road extension.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Vice Mayor Sacks?
Sir, I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you being paid for your testimony today?
Yes, ma'am.
And who's paying you?
GL Holmes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. I don't see any other light slit. How are we doing on our presentation? I think my understanding is you've got a-
I, given, given the lateness of time and the fact that your staff's going to go through the zoning stuff, I'm just going to kind of blow through this really quick, if that's okay with the board?
I think that would be-
You know, we, okay. I'll get to the end. Basically, with the approval of the swap, the amount of land that the county controls goes from 84 acres under the current Indian Trails and Hyder Development Order approvals to 1,904 acres that Palm Beach County would own and control. Land under a conservation easement would be additional 202 acres from the current Development Order approvals at Hyder West and Indian Trails to the proposed Development Order approval. An additional 202 acres would be under a recorded conservation easement. This is really the meat and potatoes of the application, so I just want to take a minute and explain, because earlier I had talked about, there I go again, earlier I had talked about, I apologize. Earlier I had talked about that the Indian Trail Grove property is being utilized for not only the off-site preservation requirement, but the off-site density requirement. And you have the difference between the one unit per acre and .8 units an acre. So earlier when the commissioner asked me regarding the projects that are utilizing the Hyder West property as preserved, those are all those numbers right there in this column. In order to replace 23.84 acres of preservation at Hyder West, I have to provide an acre for acre for preservation. But because of the density differential of .8 units per acre at Indian Trails compared to one unit per acre at Hyder West, I have to increase the amount of preservation required at the Indian Trail Grove property to offset the unit. So it, so it becomes an apple for apple. I've offset the preservation and I've offset the unit requirement. This just shows that the 1,600 acres, we have 552 acres at Hyder West, which is currently preservation. We would need 690 acres of that 1,600 acres. And then the new PUD, the PUD that would be approved on Hyder West utilizes 909 acres to meet not only its 60-40 requirement, but the unit requirements of the project. I'm not going to get into all of this stuff. Just so that there's an understanding of traffic, the approved Indian Trail Grove traffic for civic uses and for the PUD, the net reduction of traffic associated with the Indian Trail Groves changes, so the reduction in units and the changes to the civic is a reduction of 16,503 daily trips. This is a component, and I don't, I don't really want to get into it because what we're proposing here, the board direction at the transmittal hearing was for GL to work with the district commissioner to develop a site plan for the 200 acres, develop a list of improvements. And if this proposal moves forward this afternoon, we are simply asking the board to acknowledge that we have to come back to this board with a development agreement. We have a conceptual site plan. We have provided a very detailed list of what improvements that we would be making at that park site. And it would have to come back to this board as a development agreement for a future approval so that this board can authorize those improvements. This is the Hyder West property. That would be the area that's currently preservation, that would be converted to development. It is over a half mile from the, from the refuge to its west. This is the preliminary master plan that's before you. This is the conceptual site plan that's based on it. Earlier I had mentioned the workforce housing. Those are two elements here, the 152 for sale, the 125 rental. These are the two public civic sites. These are the two private civic sites. We have worked with the Torah Academy for a expansion of their eastern facilities out west because they have a dire need to provide services for the families out west. We have the Abad of West Del Ray for a synagogue. And then we are with JARC and JFS, associated with senior housing and housing for developmentally disabled. Obviously, this is conversion from preserve area to development area. So you're going to have the traffic increase from the new development is 8,733 daily trips. So if you compare the reduction in daily trips from the Indian Trail Grove property to the Hyder West property, it's a reduction of 7,730 daily trips in Palm Beach County. I am not arguing that the west, the Hyder West property is traffic. I'm just doing a comparison between the two projects so you have an understanding of the overall element of it. So I will be asked this question later on, I'm sure, with regard to the approved traffic report for the Hyder West property. Are there any roads that are over capacity associated with the approval of that project? Your staff and VHB and the consultant by GL all came to the same conclusion. We have one road, which is already over capacity, State Road 7 from Atlantic Avenue to Cabernet Drive. That is the signal that's between Boca Bridges and Seven Bridges. That road is a background failure, which means the road is over capacity already. There are intersection improvements in the DOT plan for the intersection of Atlantic and State Road 7. Just by way of reference point, in terms of background failures at the Indian Trail Grove, there are 21 of them. I'm not going to get into the school analysis, but obviously, somebody's going to ask me about the impact of the, of the Hyder West property. A thousand of the units are adult restricted. We have 277 workforce. They have a school impact. However, as I mentioned earlier, you have to take into account that the Indian Trail Grove properties is all family. So in terms of the overall school district impacts, we are reducing 152 elementary, 100 middle, and 148 high school under the SCAD. I'm not going to get into a lot of drainage issues. I just want to briefly mention that, you know, somebody always comes up and talks about that, you know, we're converting farmland, so we're going to exacerbate drainage out there and we're going to flood our adjoining properties. That's, you know, it's not true. We have to get permits by South Florida Water Management District. When a farmer gets one and a half inches of rain on their property, they immediately turn the pumps on and discharge the, discharge the water into the adjoining canals, whereas a development is required to hold the water, its retention system, and it's required through its littoral shells to help clean the water. And generally, that water discharges over a 10-plus day period versus a 24-hour period. We do have Ed Weinberg here, if there's any questions regarding wildlife, wetlands, or uplands on the Hyder West property. They've been out there. They've performed over 75 hours of field survey work between 2021 and September of 2023. There were no resident or nesting on site, no listed species resident or nesting on site, only transient foraged by listed birds. This is a blow-up of the conceptual plan. I'm not going to go through it again. Workforce housing, we did agree a couple of days ago just to drop the original request that was part of the board transmittal that included 120 and 100 to 140% in the for sale. We have now split those evenly, 33% in each of the lower three categories, so that we are consistent with the current code standard. These are just the DOAs. Commissioner Sacks was inquiring about them the other day, which project, which development projects they are. Again, they are, the development projects and the preserve parcels are bifurcated. They are separate ownership. As long as the development order itself stays compliant with the 60-40 requirements, the development order is allowed to be retained. There's the breakdown of the preserve parcels. You've seen this chart before. I'm flying through this. Obviously, the staff reports on the zoning side are part of the public record, but your staff has determined, subject to the board approving the text changes to the comp plan today, the zoning petitions would be consistent. But again, that requires that determination by the board. If the board doesn't make that determination, all, all of the remaining zoning applications are administratively withdrawn because they're not consistent with the comp plan. So we agree with your staff assessment on those, all standards being met. I'm just going to be real quick, because this is the agree to disagree. In the Hyder Preserve Number 1, which is the northern, northern 100 acres of Hyder, your staff has requested that we dedicate to them 50 acres and build a district park and pay to maintain that district park for, you know, 30 years, excuse me, 20 years at $300,000 a year. There's no proportionality to that request. This is a 1,000-unit adult community. They have onsite amenities and 277 workforce. It's a request we cannot agree to. Indian Trail Groves, we discussed the family park requirements. We have amended the timing associated with those and the MOU. As I said earlier, we cannot get our South Florida permit without having an operational plan, which would require the parties that are the, that are providing the facilities associated with where the water's going to participate in that. So we had originally discussed a time-certain condition to do that. And then we wanted a reverter clause back that said if we can't do that, then obviously we need to unwind the approvals. Obviously, we can only use our best efforts. We can't obligate the city of West Palm Beach or Indian Trail or Palm Beach County to enter the MOU. But obviously, we can't build the project without it. And so we're not commencing development on our project without having the permit in hand by South Florida. I'm not going through this stuff. Timing, this is important. The delivery of the Indian Trail Grove Water Project on the 1,600 acres, 360 COs within Hyder West or first building permit at Indian Trail, we would have to have that water project completed and conveyed over to the county. The 200-acre family park would be 261 building permits at Indian Trails and the earlier 500 COs at Hyder West. And then you can read the other, that's the timing of the civic. I know you want me to go fast. I'm going fast. So just, I'm not going to go through the summary. We've, we've been through this. We've hashed it out. So I'm going to end there. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Sacks, you're recognized.
Just because you opened the door, I like when we come back from lunch, if you could discuss, or somebody from your staff could discuss the issue with traffic, traffic issues, which are explained in your engineering summary, as well as the county's independent needs to go into a little bit greater detail. Also, with regard to the schools, 277 workforce housing families and the availability and the issues of existing schools in that area. And of course, also with regard to a public park, which, is that the ATV park that, that has been noted? Or is that, just let me, or is that a different park that you intend to build in the, in Indian Trails North County area, sir? We could discuss all of these later. Just wanted, because you opened the door.
Got it.
Let's be able to get inside after lunch. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't, I don't see any other light slit. Okay. So here, we are going to go ahead. We'll break until 1:30. And so we will recess till 1:30. We will come back. We'll finish up on these questions that were asked, and then we'll move into staff's presentation and then public comment.
Thank you.
This meeting's in recess.